Good morning. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid hearing on the Committee on Youth Services, together with the Committee on Health. Please silent all electronic devices. If you have any questions, please raise your hand and then sergeant at arms will kindly assist you at no time. Please do not approach today's. Thank you for your kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning. I'm Councilor Ralph D. Stevens, Chair of the Committee on Youth Services. Thank you for joining us today on this today's hearing addressing the childcare backlog, check backlog. In addition to today's oversight topic, we will be hearing three bills. Intro 931, sponsored by Councilmember Menon, in relation to clarifying the health code where approvals for multiple agencies are required. Intro 1159, sponsored by Councilmember Brayu, requiring the Department of Mental Health and Mental Hygiene to consult with DOE when compiling background checks for current or prospective childcare providers, employees, and volunteers. Intro 1160, sponsored by Councilmember Brayu, requiring DOHMH to complete a request for a background check for current and prospective childcare providers and employees, volunteers, within 14 days from the date a request is received. DOHMH struggles to process background checks in timely and organized fashions, has severe consequences for school and students. The process logjam has led to long delays in clearances, causing staff shortages at early childhood and after-school programs, forcing them to limit their enrollment or shutting down altogether. As a former youth service provider who has direct experience with this complicated background checks and inspection process, I am passionate about how the city can update and simplify their outdated systems to address this solvable problems. It is also unacceptable for after-school providers to wait six months or more to have staff cleared. Daycare and school-age childcare programs are under-enrolled because programs don't have enough staff, forcing parents to scramble to find affordable childcare. Additionally, while providers are waiting for staff to be cleared, their potential employees often find other employment elsewhere. I'm eager to learn how DOHMH plans to address these issues, what staff resources DOHMH has dedicated to processing background checks, and how DY City is working to help providers overcome staffing challenges. The importance of this timely and comprehensive background checks and inspections has renewed significant. The recent death of one-year-old toddler from fentanyl exposure in the Bronx daycare, which was operating as a front and shocking tragic and every parent's worst nightmare. While the actions of the daycare owners cannot be accounted for, we will question DOHMH's inspections and background checks protocol and how the agency's plans to address the procedures moving forward. I look forward to hearing from the administration on how the plans to reform background check processes to ease the burden on childcare providers and parents in need of reliable and affordable childcare. I'd like to thank the committee staff for their hard work in preparing this hearing, Committee Council Christina Yemety. I said it right? Sure. I said it right? I'm very proud of myself for that. Senior Policy Analyst Elizabeth Arts, and the entire A-Team back at the District Office. Now, I would like to turn it over to Councilmember Schulman for her opening statement.
Thank you, Chair Stevens. Good morning, everyone. I'm Councilmember Lynn Schulman, Chair of the New York City Council's Committee on Health. I would like to thank my colleagues and the administration for joining us today for this important hearing. As we all know, childcare and early education are essential services that support the health and well-being of children and families in New York City. However, these services can only be effective and safe if the providers who work in them are properly screened and vetted in a timely manner. Federal law requires all staff and volunteers who work in childcare programs to complete comprehensive background checks. These checks can reveal if a person has a history of criminal conviction, sex offenses, child abuse or neglect, or other factors that may pose a risk to children. Background checks help ensure the safety and security of the children in the provider's care and can bring parents a peace of mind knowing that they are in a safe and secure environment. Although the focus of this hearing has long been on the impact of the processing delays for childcare provider background checks, I must also mention the recent tragedy in the Bronx where one-year-old Nicholas Domenici died and three other children were poisoned from fentanyl exposure at a daycare center that was also operating as an illegal drug distributor. This painful and heartbreaking incident has reinforced how essential it is for our state, for our city to have safe, high-quality childcare providers. But to do so, we must ensure that there are no loopholes in the background check process. It is critical that all necessary background checks are processed in a timely fashion. Then New Yorkers can make informed decisions on what is best and safest for their families. I want to conclude by thanking Chair Stevens, as well as the committee staff for their work on this hearing, Committee Councils Chris Pepe and Sarah Sutra, and Policy Analyst Manure Butt, and Finance Analyst Danielle Glance. I also want to thank my team Jonathan Boucher, Seth Urbinder, Kevin MacLeir, and my new legislative aide, Andrew. Sorry.
I would like to acknowledge Councilmember Ariola, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Brayu, and Councilmember Vilas. At this time, I will turn it over to Councilmember Menon for her opening remark pertaining to her bill.
Okay. Thank you so much. I really want to thank Chair Stevens and Chair Schulman for holding today's joint hearing on the existing childcare backlog. As we all know, childcare in the city is in a serious crisis. It can literally take months for the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to clear background checks for childcare workers. This is simply unsustainable, as our city must continue to do more to ensure access to affordable and accessible childcare, and that we are supporting providers. My bill, Intro 935, is one solution to the myriad of issues this industry is facing. This legislation specifically requires DOHMH to take the lead and coordinate as needed with the relevant agencies to determine which approvals are needed and the order in which they must be obtained. Article 47 of DOHMH's health code explicitly regulates childcare. Inspections and licensing of childcare facilities involve multiple agencies, including the Department of Buildings and the Fire Department. The permitting process can be cumbersome, as DOB, DOHMH, and FDNY and others all pass or decline to take responsibility over Article 47's language and point fingers at each other. I personally have had to intervene and interact with city agencies to help solve this issue, which was preventing a childcare facility from opening in my district. We need to be making it easier, not harder, for childcare providers to exist, and I want to thank the administration for acknowledging this issue, which was included in a childcare report earlier this year. I want to thank the bill drafter Jessica Boulay, and from my team, my Chief of Staff, Jonathan Shutt, Legislative and Budget Director Brandon Jordan, and Legislative Aid John Luis Mendez Garcia. I thank the chairs once again for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Now, we'll hear from Councilmember Brayu pertaining to his two bills.
Good morning, and thank you Chair Stevens and Schulman for holding this important hearing and including my two bills, Intro 1159 and 1160. Intro 1159, 1160, both worked to clear the DOHMH childcare backlog by solidifying inter-agency communication, removing redundancies, and creating guidelines by which background checks need to be cleared by. Over the past year, we've worked with and met with providers to come up with legislation that would address their needs. Without a workable system, the ensuing chaos ultimately ends up impacting families. We are hopeful that these bills will take a meaningful step toward addressing these issues. Again, I want to thank the providers, many of which are here today, who are giving testimony and for their engagement and feedback in the lead-up to this hearing and during the past two and a half years. Thank you.
Now, we'll turn it over to the administration for their testimony.
Panels, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chair Schulman, Chair Stevens, and members of the committees on Health and Youth Services. I'm Corinne Schiff, Deputy Commissioner for Environmental Health at the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. On behalf of Commissioner Vasan, thank you for the opportunity to testify today on childcare clearance backlogs and bills addressing backgrounds, clearance checks for people who work in childcare. The Health Department is charged with protecting and promoting the health of all New Yorkers. One of our responsibilities is oversight of childcare programs. The Department regulates childcare centers, programs that serve children under age six in standalone commercial locations, and school-based childcare programs, which serve children age three to five as part of an ongoing school. New York State regulates home-based childcare, which serves children up to age 13 in a residential setting, and school-age childcare, which operates in non-residential settings to care for children in school, under age 13, after school, and during school breaks. The Health Department holds a contract with New York State to issue licenses to the state-regulated programs, process background clearances for employees of those programs, and conduct inspections and report findings to the New York State Office of Children and Family Services, the state agency that makes enforcement and other regulatory decisions. Anyone working in childcare must pass a background clearance check. Until four years ago, the background check was conducted by each provider for their own employees and consisted of a check of New York State criminal history and the New York State Central Register of Child Abuse and Maltreatment. Beginning in September 2019, the process changed significantly, as New York State began implementation of new federal childcare development block grant mandates. These federal requirements shifted who conducts the background check from each provider for its own staff to the regulatory agency for the entire workforce, and expanded the review to a comprehensive background check that includes a larger scope and frequency of the assessment. CCDBG requires the agency to check not only New York State's records of criminal history and child abuse and maltreatment, but also the New York State Justice Center for the Protection of People with Special Needs, as well as the National Sex Offender Registry. For any applicant who has lived outside of New York State in the prior five years, CCDBG requires a check of out-of-state criminal history, sex offender, and child abuse and maltreatment records. The entire comprehensive background check is required to be redone if the employee changes employer or has a break in service for more than 180 days, and regardless of any change in employment, CCDBG requires the background check to be repeated every five years. If the applicant has a criminal history, CCDBG requires the agency to conduct a detailed assessment to determine whether, given the particular circumstances, the applicant is nonetheless able, eligible to work in childcare, may work with certain restrictions, or must be excluded. The comprehensive background check enhances child safety, but also takes significant resources to complete, including time. Given the extensive review required, federal law provides 45 days to conduct the comprehensive background check. In 2019, the Department was required to take on this large new federal mandate, and we were not initially resourced to launch the program, which created a backlog of applications. I am pleased to say that as of this September, we have 40 new staff onboard, and they are close to completing training, and in May 2023, we launched a new online form so that providers can submit their applications electronically. We strive to provide excellent customer service, and we know how critically important it is to children's health and safety that the people caring for them in childcare have been fully cleared. The online form was designed and built with provider input and testing, with changes made to address provider suggestions. We issued FAQs, held training sessions, and have staff ready to provide technical assistance. We, both the provider community and department staff, are still adjusting to new processes, but improvements have been dramatic. Since launching the online form on May 22, 2023, we have successfully cleared more than 5,000 applicants, and the feedback from providers has been fantastic. In the coming months, we will continue to troubleshoot and refine the process so we can further improve. Turning now to the bills under consideration. Introduction 1159, we require the Department to consult with New York City Public Schools to see whether the applicant has completed a background check with public schools within the previous two years. The Department already consults the New York City Public Schools database for applicants whose records are in that system, and applies any information there to the new clearance application as allowed by federal law. Not all employees are in the New York City Public Schools database, and depending on the applicant's circumstances, federal law may preclude us from applying information maintained there. Mandating that we check the public school system in every case, even when we know the effort would not yield usable results, will slow, would slow our processing times. Given that we already consult the public schools database when information there could be applied to a clearance application, and that the clearance processes are federally mandated, we would like to discuss the intent of the bill with council. Introduction 1160 would require the Department to conduct the background clearance check within 14 days and mandate reporting details of every clearance check the Department conducts. The Department works to complete the background check as quickly as possible, and in some cases, the clearance can be completed within 14 days. More often, however, the process takes longer, including for reasons entirely out of the Department's control. For example, if the applicant has lived outside of New York State in the last five years, we are required to consult those states and wait for results. The results from the New York State Register of Child Abuse and Maltreatment can often take two weeks. And if there are any flags raised during the clearance process, we must conduct a careful assessment to see whether the applicant is nonetheless eligible to work in childcare, may work with conditions, or must be disqualified. Regarding reporting, the Department is happy to provide the council with details about our clearance work. We would like to discuss the proposed report details. For example, the bill would require the Department to report on each unique background check, but we recommend reporting aggregate data, because we process over 50,000 applications a year, providing line-level detail, including that an application was a duplicate submission, was for a staff person who changed employers, who had to be returned or had to be returned as incomplete. We'd be burdensome on the Department, taking staff time away from processing applications, and we expect unlikely to provide council with information in a format that would be useful. Given the timeline under CCDBG, we would also like to discuss the appropriate timeline for reporting. Finally, Introduction 931 says that where the health code requires licenses, approvals, or permits from other agencies, that the health code specify what is needed. We would like to discuss with council the intent of this bill and agree it is important for prospective providers to understand the permitting steps. The health code already specifies the other agencies that are part of the childcare center permitting process, and we provide extensive outreach and education about these requirements, including sequencing of steps. We would like to discuss these efforts with council and what more might help the industry. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm happy to take your questions.
I would like to acknowledge Councilmember Velazquez and Councilmember Sanchez, who just came in. Are you ready? All right. All right, so I'll have some questions for you. Please explain DOHMH's role in the background checks process for the different childcare programs in New York City. For the group childcare programs that fall within Article 47 of health code, what is DOHMH's role in the background check process? Please provide specifics.
Sure. So, as I noted in my testimony, there are, and as you allude to, there are different kinds of, different modalities of childcare. Childcare centers are ones that are regulated by the, under the health code and by the New York City Health Department, and we are responsible for conducting those background checks, so that the applicant submits the paperwork to us, and there are multiple steps towards processing. As I noted in my testimony, there are many different kinds of checks that happen. Once we get those results, if there is something, a flag in the history, it is our responsibility to do this safety assessment, and then we issue the results to the childcare provider. For the state-regulated programs, as I noted, we have a contract with New York State. We work on their behalf. It is their system. They have their own processing system for those employees to submit their applications, so it's different from ours. We conduct much of the processing. There are some pieces, in particular, the safety assessment. If there is an issue found in the criminal history, it is the state OCFS, Office of Children and Family Services, that does that assessment to determine whether, under the circumstances for that applicant, they are eligible to work in childcare, or there are any conditions on employment, and the determination letter goes out from the state.
So, I understood that, but I don't think everyone understands that, and that's part of the problem, where I think there's a lot of confusion around like what you guys are responsible for, because a lot of times when providers call and there's a question, it's like, oh, that's a state issue, oh, we deal with this. So, can you explain it so that it can be a little bit more clear about like what are you guys specifically responsible for, especially under Article 47, and even when we're thinking about like the SAC licenses, right? That isn't, you know, that state, and you're saying you're contracted through the state. What does that look like? And like, if I have an issue, and obviously you guys are the first line of defense, what are those steps? What does that look like? What is the state actually really responsible by? I really would like to get a little bit more clarity, because like I said, I understood what you were saying, because I understand this work. But I think that folks coming in, and even providers, we often are confused, because it's a lot of jargon in there. So, if you can break it down by like talking about one program first, and then the next, and not like kind of mush them all together.
Yes, and of course, you are, you have much experience as a former provider, so you are very familiar with this. And I would say that for providers who work in the different modalities, so providers who work in Article 47, we have specific programs for those providers, for example, an orientation session, where we walk them through our role, what inspections will look like, what the permitting process will be, how you complete a background check. And those forms, we are in pretty regular contact with those providers via email. We hold webinars, so that they will be on that track to submit their applications through our online form, as opposed to the state online form. We have a different set of staff who are there to support childcare providers who are under the state system, home-based programs and school-age childcare SAC programs. The state primarily communicates with those programs, and those programs are directed to use that online system.
That was a little bit better. Still a little jargon, but that was a lot better. And I know, and I know it gets hard, because it's all these different regulations, right? Because you have federal regulation, state, and then city, and so it does get a little bit difficult, but when even coming into this hearing, it was a lot of digging to try to really figure out like who was connected to what, and really trying to understand these things. And, and you know, like I said, because I was in the work, I understood it in a different way, but folks who were not, it was very difficult. And so I think we also have to do a better job at how we're putting this information out, so that when providers are coming online, or even new folks that are coming in, it's a better understanding, because the way it is right now, it's very difficult for folks to kind of distinguish who they should be going to, or who's really responsible, because it's easy to be like, it's state, but I still have to go to you guys, because you guys are contracted through them. So, it's still very difficult, so we definitely need to be looking at that a little bit more. According to the Health Department of the Office of Children and Family Services guidance, all staff, volunteers, and any person ages 18 or older living in a home where the program is located must undergo a comprehensive background check. How does the Health Department confirm that a background check has been conducted on every adult living in the family daycare residency? How often does the city update the list of residents living in the daycare facility to ensure no additional adults have moved into the residency? And on average, how long does it take to conduct a comprehensive background check for a family daycare provider?
Okay, there were, there were a few questions there. I will try, if I miss one of them.
Yeah, yeah. Don't worry, I will absolutely go back.
So, as you, as you noted, in a home-based childcare program, every person age 18 and older who either lives or works in that apartment is required to submit and have a background clearance check completed. They are required to notify the Office of Children and Family Services through us, who lives or works in the apartment. The provider is responsible for updating that information, if it changes, immediately upon that change. So, we are, we consult those records, and during an inspection, we will also, we are also going into that home to check that the information that we have in our records sort of checks out and meets what we observe in the home.
How often does those city update the list of residents living in a daycare facility to ensure no additional adults moved in?
So, those records are required to be updated immediately by the childcare provider. So, if the residency changes, if it changes, who lives in that apartment or who is working there, the childcare provider is required to update that at that time. So, our records are updated in real time. It is the provider that is responsible for providing that information to us.
So, what safety nets are put in place to ensure that that's happening?
So, at the time of the inspection, we will check to see whether those records sort of match our observations.
But what if they just tell the person to leave?
If they tell our childcare provider.
Yeah, so if I'm, an inspector's coming, they're like, oh, no, they don't live here. They just, you know, like what safety nets are put in to kind of like have some of those protections put into place?
So, the inspection, whether it's in a, of a home-based program or a center-based program, our inspector is working with a checklist of regulations. They're going through, it is a health and safety check, and if they observe anything that doesn't meet that checklist, they will, they will note that. If they observe things that are not on their checklist, but that are also, that are unsafe, that is something that they escalate. When it is a child-based, a home-based program, those observations are reported to the Office of Children and Family Services, for they are the, they are the enforcement decider, so those issues are brought to them to make decisions.
Okay. On average, how long does it take to conduct a comprehensive background check for a family daycare provider?
So, I have the data for our programs, for, for the home-based programs and for the SAC programs, for their data, for their turnaround times. I will have to refer you to the state. We can try to ask, get that information from the state, but that is their data. I don't, I don't have that.
Okay. And in compliance with New York State Child Care and Development Fund, CCDF, plans, New York City cannot exceed 45 days in a comprehensive, in a complete background check. Currently, how many childcare providers' checks are backlog behind the 45 limit day?
What I'd like to acknowledge is what, what all of you have said in your opening comments, which is that we had a very, very large backlog, and it really did take months and months for us to process applications. As I noted in my testimony, we have hired 40 new staff in recent months. We are, we are in the training process for the newest of those staff. We've got a new IT system. We launched an online form in May of 2023. We still have a backlog. We've got a backlog of about 140 applications.
140, that's it?
140. So, we are making enormous progress. We are not, I'm not here to say we are where we want to be. We are still, we are still perfecting these systems. We're still troubleshooting. We're still learning new systems. Providers are still learning them, but we are really on a much better trajectory. It's taking us an average of about 36 days right now to process.
Thirty-six?
An application. So, so I think, you know, again, we've got a little bit to go, but this is really what we needed. We needed staff, and we needed an IT system. And so, we've got that, and so we're just doing much better.
So, one of my questions, and I think I asked this before, why didn't you guys think about clearing the backlog of what you had before you launched the new system? Because you already had a backlog when the system was launched, and so then you had that backlog, and then you had a new backlog from when the system launched, and you were working out the glitches. So, why didn't you actually clear out the backlog and then launch the system?
So, let me tell you some things that we did do. So, last summer, we had an extraordinary backlog, tens of thousands, frankly. Yes, you know, and probably all of you heard from providers. So, we actually ceased some of our activities. This was before we had all of our new staff, and we focused on clearing that backlog, and we spent about two months just focused on that backlog to clear that out. We still didn't have our staff, the new staff that we needed, and we still didn't have an IT system. So, over the course of a year, this was summer '22, we developed another, we developed a backlog again. When we got our new system on May 22, we announced to the provider community that from, you know, from that point on, all applications needed to be submitted through this online system. We spent a few more months with many, many staff, still devoted to the paper backlog that we still had. We wanted to, we didn't want people to have to submit again, and we wanted to make sure that the system was working. We spent about three months and felt really confident that the system was working, and what we found was that our staff were spending a lot of time still on those paper, they weren't literally paper, but they were email attachments. It was very, very clunky and time-consuming. And we found that we were spending a huge amount of time on those. A lot of those applicants, as you can imagine, were no longer working in those programs for reasons that you have said. And so, we recently, in the last couple of weeks, have said, we think it's going to be best for everybody, that we just move entirely into the online system. You're going to get a response faster from us. It means we can move all of our staff into the online processing. People will learn that new system, and we're just going to get faster and faster. So, these were the decisions we had to make. Working our way through those email applications was going to take a long time. We wanted to test the system first. It really is working very well. As I noted, we've cleared more than 5,000 applicants since, since late May. And so, that, those were the decisions we made, and I think, you know, we're really in a much better place as, as I'm describing.
Just curious, how much staff did you have before? Because I know you said you added 40 staff currently. What was the number you were at with staff before?
So, this, this unit has, we have 55, we have 55 people onboard, so we had So this unit has, we have 55, we have 55 people onboard, so we had, you know, that minus 40, but I will say that what we had to do, because that was not enough people.
So you have 55 now or you have 55 before?
We have 55 now, 55 onboard now. We've got eight in the onboarding process, just in our clearance unit. So what we were doing pre being, you know.
So you had 15 staff before?
Yes. We did also have, we relied on temps, we relied on overtime. All of these were not good systems, you know, temps, you know, people.
Why did you guys only have 15 staff?
Because we were not, you know, as I noted in my testimony, we were not, we were given a new, a large new mandated program and we weren't.
I know, that was in 2019.
Yes.
And so we're in 2023 and you have 15 staff. This huge mandate came down from the federal government and you, and now we're just adding 40 staff? Because like that, of course you had a backlog. Like there's no way around it, like that.
Yes, I mean, what, you know, what we tried to do when we were not able to hire, what we tried to do was we hired temps, which is not a great way to launch a program. We pulled people, you know, we don't have people with nothing to do, so we pulled people and, you know, we offered overtime for people to do that work. People did this, you know, when they could, but yes, and that's, and that's why, and I'm not, you know, we were not, I'm not here to say that that was good, but what I am here to say is that we now have those staff. Some of them are still in training because they're new. We worked, you know, everyone here knows, I think, we're in a tough labor market. We worked so hard, we were so happy to be able to hire people. We worked incredibly hard to bring on new staff. We are onboarding, you know, we're in the training process for the last of our new staff. We finally have a new system, so happy to build our new online system. People were working with email attachments, they would try to open the attachment.
Yeah, I remember, you used to email them, it was crazy.
You would email them, and I'll tell you.
And they would get lost in the email and then you would email and then there would be a new person there and you're like, oh, they no longer here, I have to send it. But I had no idea it was 15 people. I think that is crazy because you're literally processing thousands of applications and it was through email, like of course this is why we're here.
I will tell you on the other side, receiving your email, our staff would open your email attachment and literally they would sit there waiting for it to open because we are so clogged with email systems. That is not a way to process 50,000 applications a year. But the good news is, as of May, May 22nd, 2023, we have an online form. We were able to make the forms much simpler. People were filling out forms that had a lot of duplicate information required. We made a much more intuitive, simple form. We worked with, we got input from providers. We made it flexible so that providers could fill it out in the different ways that works for their system. And really, we're not there yet, you know, we still have a little bit of a backlog. Our staff are still learning the new system. Providers are still making some mistakes, but it's getting better as we're all learning a new system. But we are really on a path to a much better place and our goal is to have no backlog.
So when you launched the new system in, because you launched it, I believe, in June, correct?
The online system, May 22nd, 2023. It was such an important day, I remember the date.
Yes, I knew it was like May or June, but how many staff did you have then?
So, you know, I would, I don't have, I don't, we have been, we have been hiring and onboarding people for a few months, so I don't know, literally on May 22nd, how many we had. We only just brought the last of the new hires onboard in the last few weeks and we do, we are bringing on eight additional staff. So, you know, to give you the timeline, I would really have to go back.
And I just asked that because again, like even with the new system, my question is, why wouldn't you staff up so that you can do multiple things? And it seems that like you were like trying to staff up at the same time as you're launching this and like understanding that again, you're also creating another bottleneck. So like it's just thinking about like why, like what was the steps of like thinking of like, okay, we already know that we already have this backlog, we only have 15 staff, maybe we should staff up, then launch it so that we can kind of clear some of these things out?
So we wanted to do everything at once as fast as we could. It was important to have new staff, it was important to train them, that, all of that onboarding and training takes time. It was also important to get providers using a better form, a better system, and all of those things would feed into each other. We didn't really, as we bring on new staff, this was another question. Do we train them on the old terrible email system or do we bring them onboard and immediately train them in the new system? So really, our goal was to get out of this backlog problem, which was due to staff and a lack of an IT system as fast as we could, and we were just doing everything as fast as we could.
I mean, listen, with 15 staff, I know you guys are working hard, but like it just, it just seems crazy to me, like that just, like understanding the value, like if I have a program and you have, you have 125 kids, that means you have 24 staff. And so we have thousands of programs across the city, so that means you have, you guys are processing thousands of applications. So it's just, it's just, I guess for me, that's probably the most mind-blowing thing that I've learned today around that.
I do, you know, I do want to just note, you know, we did use temps, so it wasn't literally only 15 people, we were able to hire temps, but with temps.
But even having a temp, like that's very limited on what they can do because one, they're there temporarily and two, they don't know the system in full capacity, so.
Absolutely. And the good news is, we now have full-time staff, we are training the newest of our staff, we now have an IT system. As I said, we are, our goal is no backlog. We are not exactly where we want to be, but we are on a trajectory to where we want to be and what the childcare providers deserve.
Okay, so SAC license, I mean SAC providers have reported that returning staff are experiencing longer wait times than new employees to receive their clearances. What is the reason for this discrepancy?
You know, I haven't, I haven't heard of that discrepancies. What I'd like to do is follow up with your office and maybe get a couple of examples. When we do have examples of things that are not working, we try to use those to see where, you know, we are continuing to troubleshoot. If it is a SAC program, I'm going to try not to be jargon-y, but as you know, that is in the state system, but we'll take a look at that. So I'd love to follow up and get some examples.
Yeah, because and that's why I was saying in the beginning around like, let's talk about how, like what you guys are responsible for, because although it's the state system, they contract you. So I know a lot of times we like to be like, well, it's the state system, that's kind of them, but you're contracted and so you're the person that we go to. So that's why I'm asking these questions, because you should have the information because they're contracting you to actually fulfill these things, so.
Sure, well, we'll be in touch, we'll get, let's get us some examples so we can look into those and see what the issues might have been.
According to the federal law, a comprehensive background check is valid for five years unless there's a break in services working in a program for more than 180 days. However, DOHMH currently conducts background checks with instructor moves between age gaps, locations of different providers, even if it was in, within the five years timeframe. Is this legally required and is this policy unnecessarily contributing to the backlog?
So this is one of the things we were able to change when we launched the online system. So now a provider, when they are filling, when they are submitting an application for a particular employee, they can note every location in their system and they will be cleared for each of those locations with some nuance for an education.
I was about to say, not about to ask.
Yeah, for an education director, that is not the case, but for a lot of the staff, that is the case.
Can you tell me and explain to me why? Because that has always been my pet peeve around, it does not make sense that if I, because a lot of times they are working for the same agency and an agency has multiple sites and you can't, if you're not cleared at that site, you can't go there. So I'm not understanding why if I'm cleared at one site, that cannot transfer over to another site? Like that just seems kind of unnecessary.
So as I noted, for some of the providers, we are able to do that at the outset of the application and otherwise, we are following what federal law says and what New York State is guiding.
So that's in the federal law that you have to be cleared at all the sites?
You know, let me get back to you to see, some of it is what New York State is guiding us to do, so if it's, so let me get back to you about exactly the reason for this question. We will redo, we call it a waiver for providers.
And sometimes it takes longer to get the waiver.
So again, with our new system, things are going much more quickly.
I mean, you keep saying that, but that's not what I'm hearing from providers, that it's not going as quickly as you guys are anticipating it. I mean, going from like zero to one is not that much quicker. So I think, you know, we should, because I see the providers in the back like, what? Every time we say quicker, so I think we should acknowledge that too. But yeah, I would definitely love to get that information on why, if I'm cleared at one site, that we have to, you know, do all these additional things? Because that was always one of my pet peeves and even if you're saying now that you can get cleared at multiple sites on the onset, sometimes you might not put a site down and like I might need a teacher to go over there for the day and they can't because they're not cleared to be there. And that often, that often creates issues around staffing. And this is one of the issues that I'm hearing from providers and I remember having myself putting us in a bind around like being able to get a substitute to come in and do the work or whatever, or stepping in when it was needed because folks aren't able to, they're not cleared, or you didn't know that, you know, those things needed to happen. So, you know, when you're thinking about like when teachers are in school, a substitute teacher, they can come in because they don't have to get cleared every single time they're stepping into a different school building. So definitely would love to hear what law that is, whether it's federal or state, because you're saying it's not through you guys. So under the current extended timeframe to complete a background check, short-term and temporary hires such as summer staff often do not receive clearances until the program has started. Has DOH explored establishing expedited clearing process for short-term temporary hires? Because I can tell you this myself, I have had staff, we have put their application in at the beginning of the summer and then I would get their clearance in December.
So one thing I haven't talked about is in addition to the staff that we have who are full-time in our clearance unit, we do also have about 85 staff who have a variety of duties, but that include conducting clearances and are there to work on special situations when there is a reason that there needs to be somebody expedited. So that may be some, a way that we are able to handle, you know, I can't speak to the specific circumstance that you're describing, but we do have some staff because we know that there are situations where a program isn't able to operate because they have a new education director and that person has to be cleared. And so we handle that, we really handhold those and handle them differently so that we're able to triage what's coming into us to meet the needs of the providers. We also have, we have a dedicated line, we do have staff who are monitoring a dedicated email address that we have been repeatedly sharing with programs so that they know how to reach us when they have an issue so that we can troubleshoot that with them. It's an email box that we have actively monitored and getting back to programs as quickly as we possibly can to solve these kinds of issues.
And so, and I, so like, we all know, especially in the summer, it's always gearing up time. Do you guys, and I think this, for me, thinking about when you're talking about the temps, is that when you're like getting additional temps and things like that? Because I always just felt like it just, especially in the summer, we know every year it's the same year and it happens. How are we preparing to make sure those things happen? Because we know we're going to have an influx of S Y P, we're going to have all these summer camps and all these things. Can you talk to me a little bit about what that looks like to gear up for that timeframe? And especially even with this new system, how are you guys thinking about preparing for next summer?
There is a seasonality to some of this work, this, you know, as we head into next summer, this will be the first summer that we will have with our full staff, full complement of staff and our, and our new system. We do, you know, we will sometimes pull in, ask our staff to do overtime when we have additional work happening, so that that's one option. But it's a good question and we'll be, you know, we're still in our startup phase really, but as we get in, as we really hit a steady state, I think that's the time when we can start to think about some surge capacity for the, for the seasonality when we get additional applications.
Yeah, I think that that's definitely something should, we should definitely be considering and thinking about because, you know, especially at the start-up of the summer, you always get an influx and then at the start-up of the school year, you get another influx, right? Like during the rest of the time, you know, we have, we lose staff and people come in and out, but I think that if we know that those are the busiest times, how are we kind of like being a little bit more prepared for that? I just have a couple of more questions before I turn it over to my colleagues and I would like to also acknowledge Councilmember Hudson has joined us. SAC licensed providers received an invitation to join OCFS Family Application Management System or FAMS in May of this year. They reported that while this protocol hasn't improved, there is no matrix to correct or changes their application after submission. As a result, providers are constantly reaching out to DOHMH for questions and guidance. Has DOHM explored on creating mechanics to allow providers to correct or add additional information?
So the FAMS, the state system, their online system launched about a week or two before ours, so also in May 2023. We'd be happy, they designed that system, it's their system, but we'd be happy to provide, I think that's important feedback, so happy to provide that information to OCFS that might be a change that they can make.
And so even with that, thinking about, they launched it, did they not consult you guys? Did you guys not have like conversations about, it looked like you guys didn't give recommendations? How does this work? Because that just seems very strange that, you know, they launched it a week before you guys and why didn't you guys coordinate these things a little bit better? Just trying to figure out that relationship.
So they did do some demonstrations of their new, of their new system for us. I mean, we were, we were both, I think, trying to launch an online system as quickly as we could and they were just a week or two ahead of us.
Hmm, okay. For SAC programs, OCFS licensing, licensing and enforcement agencies and DOHMH contractors conduct oversight on behalf of OCSF. SAC providers report that they have struggled to identify a point person. They often are cycled between city and state to get answers to their questions. Who should providers contact if they have questions or need expedited, an expedited background check?
So that's really important feedback. I think what we should do is work with OCFS, which is the agency that communicates directly with those providers to make sure that that's clear about how to reach them and when, and how to reach us and when. On the city side, we do have very clear channels of communication and that's important and I think helpful for providers and so we would like to establish that for our state-regulated programs as well.
But that, I mean, again, this is why I feel like folks are confused, because if they're, if they're contracting you to be the first line of defense, then why are we then going to the state? So why wouldn't they be coming to you guys first and you clearing it out? Like I feel like this is part of the confusion here.
It's helpful to have this feedback. If providers are confused, then we would, we will work on.
I mean, I'm confused right now.
I hear, I hear you. So we will work, you know, it is OCFS that communicates with their programs, but we will, we will speak.
You guys communicate too.
We're happy to work with OCFS to work on communicating with state-regulated programs so they know who to reach.
Again, it's very confusing because again, I'm asking, you're saying like, oh, we're happy to communicate, but like you guys are typically the first person they reach out to. And so I don't understand why you wouldn't have the information or the answers because they contract, because in your opening statement, you mentioned that they have contracted you guys to do this work. So wouldn't you guys be the first person that they would reach out to? So that's why it's very confusing. And even when I was a provider, it was always confusing because I would call you guys and then you would say, call OCFS and I would call them and they would say, call you guys back. And so this clarity between you two agencies, this is not our fight, this is y'all's fight. So y'all need to really figure this out and get clarity so that providers know distinctly, yes, we go to OCFS and they're responsible, don't call us. But that's not what you guys say. It is sometimes we'll call and I'll get an answer, or sometimes they'll say, call them and then they'll be like, call you guys back and then you'll give us an answer. And so that's part of the issue around even the backlog. So I think definitely we should continue to have conversations about what this looks like around making sure the protocols are clear and concise so that everyone can be on the same page. I just have one more question. How often and at what point during the process does DOHMH communicate with providers about the status of their background checks?
So one of the other innovations of the online system is we created a lookup tool so that providers can check themselves. So when you submit your application, you get an ID number and at any time, you'll get an, you'll get an email response to say it's been submitted. And then we have a lookup that you can type in that number and you can see and follow the status along the way.
And so this is with the new system?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to, oh, Councilmember Sanchez is here and she has a very brief statement and then I will turn it over to Chair Shulman for her questions.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chairs, and thank you both, Chair Stevens and Chair Shulman, for your attention to these issues of background check backlogs and center inspections long before tragedy struck in Kingsbridge. And so I just wanted to make a statement on behalf of our community and in particular Nicholas's family. Nicholas was a beautiful, fast-running, smiley, one-year-old baby that we lost following opioid exposure at a daycare center in our neighborhood where he lost his life and three other children were hurt and their families traumatized. And this is a painful time in Kingsbridge, especially for those who have babies of our own, and we see little Nicholas in our own children. It's a call to action for our city and our state and our. It's a call to action for our city and our state and our country. These children should have been safe at daycare. Their parents did everything right, from working with trusted community institutions to vetting their own licensed daycare providers. They followed everything that they should have. And we believe that government protocols failed, and this hearing, although it's been in the works for such a long time because of your leadership, thank you Chairs, is part of the investigation that we all have to do. I, I want to share that, you know, the, the family, Nicholas's family, at, at this stage, all they want is for their baby back. That's, that's all they, they would want. But since that, since that cannot happen, they're calling on us, on us policymakers, on us who have power to make change, to leave no stone unturned, and make sure that we ask all the questions so that something like this can never happen again. So I thank you, Department of Health, Department of, both, both of you, for, for your leadership and your cooperation with the investigation in particular. I want to also just thank the NYPD and law enforcement for the swift capture of those responsible. And I want to thank the ma, the many great providers and advocates who have come to me and come to our colleagues, providing and offering ideas and support during this time, because there are, of course, many great providers out there. But I, I want to make sure that I ask questions in connection to, to the tragedy here and foreshadow that I, I hope with the support of the Speaker, with my colleagues and our colleagues in the state, that in addition to the conversation we're having today about background checks, that we're also going to have an in-depth conversation about inspection processes. Commissioner Hassan has, has said that inspectors at DOHMH, of course, were not trained to look for illicit substances, perhaps we never would have thought, but perhaps they should have been. And so those, those are conversations that, that I, I really look forward to having on behalf of and in honor of the Nicholas family. And so just a few questions. In this particular case, did the childcare inspector backlog affect the opening of the center? Was anyone who was a known person, since we know that there was, there were lies told to, to the agency, but for, for folks that were known to be part of the childcare center care providing team, was anyone operating with their own background check not yet approved? And in, in support of Councilmember Abreu's introduction eleven sixty, if fourteen days is too onerous, as you mentioned, there, there are, there are realities that might be outside of DOHMH's control? How long is it currently taking? You may have mentioned this, how long is it currently taking for DOHMH to turn around background checks and what, what would be a more suitable timeframe? Thank you, Chairs.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. You know, the, the tragic death of that little boy in the home-based childcare program shook all of us at the Health Department and in our childcare program. We've expressed our condolences to Nicholas's family. And, you know, as always is the case, when something terrible happens in any business that we work with, in any industry that we work with, we take a very hard look at everything that we do. I have been meeting with our childcare staff at every level. They are public health professionals who come to work every day, really driven to promote safe environments for children. They conduct health and safety inspections using a checklist that document the regulations that the providers are responsible for following. Those are unannounced inspections. They're also, they also know to escalate, and this is something we've been talking about as I've been talking with our staff, when they see something that's unsafe, even if it's not on the checklist, they escalate that to their supervisor, and if it's something that should be called into NYPD, they do that. We know, as you have said, and, and we know from our work, that the vast majority of childcare providers are working hard and creating safe and loving environments for children. And I, I, I want to reiterate that, as you have just said, it's so important for parents to hear that, and for the childcare providers to hear that. I think it's been a very hard time for everybody. So we're thinking about what are there, what other important things are there for us to do? We're also speaking with OCFS. So I, I did just want to say that, and now I've forgotten your questions.
Just about, thank you, thank you, Deputy Commissioner. The specific questions were about whether known folks who were working in this daycare center, whether they had their background checks in an active, right? They, they had good, clear background checks? And if fourteen days is too onerous, how many, how much time is appropriate?
So, you know, this, this case is part of a criminal investigation. So the, the, what I can say is the people who were known to the department had been As for the timeline, you know, I, we do think that, that the forty-five-day federal mandated process, that that is the right timeline. As I noted, you know, there are pieces of this that just take a long time. If someone has worked, and, and, and I think, you know, thinking about this family, and, but for all of our children, we want to do this as quickly as possible, but we also want to make sure the children are in spaces with people who have been cleared. And some of this just takes a long time. If someone has worked, has lived out of state, we are consulting the records out of state. Some states are quick, some states are not. If we find something in the background, we are, we are doing an assessment of that, and I, I wouldn't want our staff to feel like they need to rush that assessment to meet a different timeline. We want to do it in a timely way, but we want to do it carefully.
I'm sorry, if I, if I may, when, before the change to DOHMH responsibility for these background checks, do you have a sense of how long it was taking the private providers?
So let me get back to you about that. I know we had plenty of complaints then too, about waits. But just recall that that check was, there was less being checked. So it was also, it was also different. But let me, let me, let me talk to people, you know, I've sort of, five years ago, I would have been able to answer that, but I'm so focused on our new requirements. So let me get to you about a timeline. But I, you know, I think what's important here is that the, the comprehensive background check, which is what this is called, this is a good thing, right? This is enhancing safety. This is making sure that we are checking many different databases, repositories, information. So that is an enhancement for child safety. But then it's just taking time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. We're going to turn it over to Chair Shulman. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So, so I just want to go back for a second to a couple of things that Chair Stevens talked about, the, the confusion issue, because when she was asking you the questions, I was looking out in the audience and saw a lot of people, providers, I presume, shaking their heads and smiling. So there has to be a way that, and I know the state is part of it, and you know, it's this back and forth between city and state, city and state. If there's a way that we could even give like a fact sheet or something that would be helpful, that can just, you know, clear up some of the confusion around what's needed and what's not, that would be really helpful. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just making a statement about that before I ask a question, but, and you can answer it when I ask. So the other thing is you talked about having fifteen staff, is that full, is that, there's no-
We got forty, we got fifty-five.
Oh, fifty-five, I'm sorry. That was fifteen before, sorry, 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 sorry. Is that, are there any vacancies there, or are they all full, filled?
So, so in our, in our clearance unit, which is people who are working full-time on this work, we have fifty-five staff now, we've got eight, in the onboarding process, they haven't started with us yet, we've got five, we've got five openings, so we are, you know, if you, if you know people-
So five, so five openings in addition to whatever you have onboarding?
Yes, and then we have, you know, we have, as I noted, we also have eighty-five staff who have a variety of duties, including doing this work. And that's where we can do some of the, you know, the, the, the opening, when, when a program is opening, when there's an education director who is a, which is the leader position in the, in the childcare program, when there's a, when there's a childcare program that we have had to close for a safety reason. So we have other staff who have a variety of duties, but where they can also work on background clearances, but fully dedicated to the work. We have fifty-five now, we're bringing on eight more, and then we've got, you know, had a little turnover, so we have five openings. So please send us good candidates.
Has any thought been given to having maybe a special number for providers that they can call if there's an issue? It doesn't have to be like a person answering all the time, at least somebody can monitor it and get back to people, so.
So we do have, we have an email box dedicated just to this. We do have, we do have phone numbers also, we have, we have borough offices, and, and so there are phone numbers, but we also have an email box that is dedicated to clearance issues, that is actively monitored by multiple people so that we can get back to people as quickly as possible.
I would like you to consider having one phone number that is just for everyone. I think that would be helpful, and maybe that you don't have to do it on the borough basis, you just have the one phone number and people can monitor it and you make assignments for that. But I'm just making, I'm making the suggestion, because I think that might be a little easier for folks, at least to try it on a, on a, you know, on a test basis. So other regions in New York State have contracted with third-party providers to process background checks. Has DOHMH considered exploring this option to expedite processing?
So I, I think, you know, at this point, we're, we're, as I've said, we're on it, we're on a pretty good trajectory. I think I'm, you know, I'm, again, I'm not here to say we're, we're all the way there, but I think we have what we need now. We're still in a sort of startup phase, but I think we're, we're getting there and it's, and it's appropriate for us to manage this.
Okay, so going back to the five vacancies, I want to know how the central clearance unit will be impacted by the five percent budget cut in the November plan and recently implemented hiring freeze?
So, you know, as we are working through that backlog, and we really are on this good trajectory, and we're working very closely with O M B.
Okay, it's not really an answer, but, okay. The Bureau of Daycare's fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget is twenty-three-point-seven million dollars in comparison, FY twenty twenty-three budget is twenty-eight-point-six million dollars. How is this reduction in funding anticipated to impact services? Does the Bureau of Daycare have a satisfactory budget to inspect the city's childcare centers?
So we do have what we need to conduct the inspections and to conduct the background clearances.
There were two-hundred-and-fifty-nine full-time employees at the Bureau of Daycare when the FY twenty twenty-four budget was adopted. At adoption of the FY twenty twenty-three budget, the number of full-time employees was two-sixty-six, which is a decrease of seven positions when compared to this fiscal year. Which, which, what are the seven job titles that are currently vacant?
I'm going to have to get back to you about that.
Please, please do.
Yeah.
How have the fiscal twenty twenty-three pegs impacted the agency's capacity to fill those positions?
So we have been actively filling positions.
How many full-time inspectors does DOHMH employ?
So we have about a hundred inspectors who are out in the community doing inspections.
Do these inspectors-
How many?
How many of those inspectors are specifically for childcare?
Those are inspectors, inspectors for childcare.
Are they also doing inspections for other things? Because I know at one point, there was inspectors who were also inspecting child cares and also doing restaurant inspections, and they were different inspectors because there was a shortage.
Those are childcare inspectors.
So there's not people doing multiple inspections?
That, we have a hundred people who are doing inspections of childcare programs.
Okay, you didn't answer the question, but okay.
Oh, I meant to answer the question. Childcare, people who are doing inspections of childcare programs are not doing inspections of restaurants.
According to OCFS, in twenty twenty-two, there were nine-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-two registered childcare providers in New York City. Does DOHMH have enough staff to inspect these programs?
Yes, we do.
Based on the administration's plan to issue a hiring freeze and cut five percent of DOHMH's budget next month, how does the agency plan to ensure that the almost ten-thousand childcare providers in the city are being adequately inspected?
We are, we are working closely with our O M B colleagues.
Okay, I can see the road this is going. What is DOHMH's role in the inspection process for group childcare programs that fall under Article forty-seven of the Health Code?
So the childcare centers that are under Article forty-seven, those are the city-regulated programs. So our role is to issue permits and to conduct inspections, and also to conduct the background clearances.
How often does DOHMH inspect such programs per year?
So we will inspect those programs at least annually for, as part of a health and safety inspection. We will conduct re-inspections depending on what we observe, if there are issues that need to, need a follow-up inspection, we will conduct a follow-up inspection. We also have inspections conducted by early childhood education consultants, and those, those are sort of a combination of checking issues like staff qualifications, medical records, and also the, those staff are master's-level educators, early childhood educators, who have been education directors themselves. And so they also have a role in supporting childcare programs, in, in best practices, reviewing curriculum, that sort of thing. I've been on these inspections, and, and they're, and they're really terrific.
Okay, does, does DOH conduct surprise inspections of Article forty-seven programs?
Our inspections are unannounced.
So, because in the case of this particular situation that Councilmember Sanchez mentioned, they had had a surprise inspection, right? Was that by, was that by DOHMH?
Yes, so our contract with OCFS is to conduct inspections. We report those findings to OCFS, and we conduct, those are also unannounced or surprise inspections.
Is there a difference between a regular inspection and an unannounced, or there's the same criteria that's look, that you look for?
Yes, it's, it's the inspection, it's just that we don't say in advance that we are coming. It is just unannounced. You could say surprise, we just say unannounced.
Okay. What is DOHMH's role in the inspection process for group family and family daycares?
So those inspections similarly are health and safety inspections. We are, the inspector is working through a checklist, which includes the, the state regulations, they're looking for health and safety issues. Is there a fire extinguisher? Is there a second means of egress? Are medications out of reach of children? So similar kinds of health and safety checks.
Is it possible to share the checklist with us?
Yes.
Okay, would love to, to see that. Does DOHMH conduct inspection? You conducted on behalf of the State Office of Children and Family Services, right?
Correct, and we report our observations to them.
Is that a legal requirement, or that's a policy decision?
That is what our, so these, these requirements, so the requirements for Article forty-seven programs are in the New York City Health Code. The requirements for family daycare programs, home-based programs are in New York state law. OCFS is the regulatory agency charged under state law, and they issue a contract to us.
Okay. So what is DOHMH's role in the inspection process for SAC licensed programs?
So SAC programs, as, as we've been discussing, are also under state authority. Our contract with OCFS has us conducting those inspections. So it's a similar review when we go, and it's also an unannounced inspection, checking for those health and safety requirements and reporting our findings to the state.
Can you describe the training that inspectors receive to do the inspections?
Yeah, sure. So our, our health inspectors are all college graduates with a heavy background in science. They have, need to have thirty science credits to meet the hiring requirements. And then we have about a three-month training program. We have, there's a classroom training component, and then there is experiential training where they will shadow more senior inspectors, and then as they grow, they are out there but being shadowed, and then they're ready to be out on their own. And I just, we just had a new, a new group starting this week, I just went and met with them to welcome them yesterday. I just went and met with them to welcome them yesterday, as they have started their
Why do they have to have a science background? Why do they have to have 30 credits? Because that seems like that would be a barrier to put up and would be a reason why you're having trouble hiring.
So that is a state law, state law that dictates the public health sanitarian requirements.
How often do the inspectors receive refresher trainings?
So we have a, an active in-house training unit that, so that we have opportunities for in-house training, so I don't know, I'll have to get back to you to see if they have a regular cadence of training, but we do have a unit that is devoted to ongoing in-service training for our, for our staff.
So when you have, and I know that this particular case where the child passed away is under investigation, but in general, when something happens like that, do you just, do you go through what the inspection was and all that? I'm just asking the process, I'm not asking for the specific findings of what happens in those particular circumstances.
So I, I, I'm trying to think of how to answer the question, you know, anytime there is an inspection where there is a question, there is a conversation with the inspector or review of the documentation, a review with the supervisor.
Is there, when they do the inspections, is just one person that goes out?
Yes.
And then those, when, how many inspections do they do in the course of a day?
I will have to get back to you about that.
I just, what I'm getting, what I'm trying to get at is, are there a lot, are they overwhelmed with what they're looking for, that's what I'm trying to figure out, the workload?
You know, I will say that we are all busy, but, you know, it also varies. A program that is, you know, an Article 47 program that has many classrooms, many children, is going to take longer than a small, home-based program. A class, a, a program where we find a lot of deficiencies is going to take longer than a walkthrough of a program where things are in good shape, so there's just a lot of variability.
I just want to make sure they, that they feel they have the time to do a thorough inspection, that was.
That, the, the training is to do a thorough inspection, there are no mandates to do a certain number a week, we have, we, we have, you know, our goals are to meet, to do at least one annual inspection a year, but we are staffed to do that, and the, and as I, as I noted in response to Councilmember Sanchez's comment, as I have been out talking to our, to our staff, I just felt, just really reminded of how much they are out there to, it is important to them, they know how important this work is, and they, I don't think, I don't have any reason to think that they are feeling pressured to get in and out of there, if that's what the question is.
I have one more question before I hand it back to Chair Stevens. When staff are pending approval and DOHMH conducts an inspection, is the provider penalized because their staff has not yet been cleared?
So, there needs, the education director, who is the lead at the program, needs to have been cleared, and that's why I noted that we've got staff who are sort of there to handhold and expedite those, because that's how the program can open. For other staff, so long as they have submitted the application to us, and they are under supervision of a cleared person, there, there isn't, isn't a summons for, for that, and, you know, we know that that too is a burden, I don't, I don't mean to say that it's, that it's not, and that is why we are just so happy that we are now, we're not there yet, but that we are on a trajectory to getting where we want to be.
All right, now I'm going to hand it back to Chair Stevens. Thank you very much, Deputy Commissioner.
Well, thank you. I know DYCD, I have questions for you, don't worry, I'm coming, but I'm gonna create space for my colleagues, and I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Brey.
Thank you, Chair Stevens and Chair Shulman. First, I would like to open up by thanking you for your, for your testimony and your feedback. First, I would like to push back on 1159. The intent of 1159 is to utilize the online, the online system, we're not asking for them, we're not asking for you to have a phone conversation for each background check, that's not the goal. In fact, we're trying to, we want to move away from that, we want to be efficient. If DOHMH is already checking the DOE system where applicable, then we would want to codify that and explore how we can go further, and we look forward to discussing that offline. But I also, but I do have a question on Identigo. Why does Identigo process both DOE and DOHMH fingerprints, but they are not interchangeable? Is this due to the vendor, or is DOHMH requiring additional fingerprints apart from DOE?
I'm gonna have to get back to you about that, I'll say that Identigo, the health department engaged Identica, which is a third-party provider, which has outlets all over the city and elsewhere, as a way to make it easier for providers to get fingerprinted, so that there are many, many locations, which had been a barrier to clearances in the old system that Councilmember you had asked me about, the pre-CCDBG system, so that was an, that was an innovation that, that we started a few years ago, that I think has made things very helpful. I'll get back to you about, about interchangeability.
Should they be interchangeable?
I'll have to get back to you.
Okay. With respect to 1160, the administration is, well, at least you have said, on behalf of the administration, that individual data is too burdensome, and that you'd prefer to do aggregate data. The question is, what data are you already collecting?
So we're looking at the, the items that you have in the bill that you would like us to report, to make sure that's something we'll be able to report, really, our, our recommendation is, because we, we do receive about 50,000 applications a year, that we find something that would be, you know, ways to report aggregate data that would be useful to you, rather than report line-level data.
Wouldn't it be less work to report for each individual? According to our council data team, it suggests that it wouldn't be more burdensome, so it's why I asked the question.
I think producing a report with 50,000 line entries would be, would be burdensome, and really, we want to produce information that's, that's useful to you, and that's easy for us to create, because I will have to pull people off of the clearance work to do this report, so we'd love to talk with you about this, I think we can find something, you know, as I said, we're happy to report, so we'd like to report something that meets your needs and, and that is easy for us to produce.
We'll be in, in communication, thank you.
Look forward to it.
Councilmember Menon?
Thank you so much. So I have a line of questioning based on the powerful statement from my colleague, Councilmember Sanchez, and based on the chair's prior questioning. DOHMH inspector checklist, does it include an inspection of every single room in a home-based childcare facility?
Yes.
Okay, how long did this particular inspection take?
Do you mean the inspection on the timer?
The time, the time, the time period, because inspectors generally clock in and clock out and put that information on. How long did this particular inspection take, and how does that differ from the average inspection time?
When you say this particular inspection?
The one involved in the Bronx tragedy.
I don't have the timestamps for that inspection, or, or the general timestamps, but we can get back to you about that, if, you know, if it's something we're able to share.
Yes, could you please provide to the respective committees the actual time inspection and how it differs from the average time of a home-based childcare facility, just so we, the respective committees can have that, that would be really helpful, if you can provide that.
We'll, we'll look and see if we, if that's something we can provide.
Did you, have you all changed the protocol training for the inspectors in light of this tragedy?
So as I said, when any terrible thing happens, we look inside out and upside down at every piece of the process, and we are looking to see what else we should be doing.
But has there, I guess my question is, has, I mean, I served previously as Commissioner of Consumer Affairs, it had a whole division of inspectors, we would constantly modify training. Have you all modified the training that's given to these particular inspectors in light of the tragedy, and if so, how?
We're looking to see what, if, what other training we might need to do.
Okay, I can't, I understand there's an active criminal investigation, I certainly understand that, but I can't impress upon the fact that I think, you know, given what happened, there needs to be a modification of the training. So for example, when these inspectors are going into every room, how long are they taken, what, what are they exactly looking for? And given the scourge of fentanyl that is existing in the city, what can be done to improve the training process?
So as I said, we are, we are reviewing all of these issues, and to determine what other things we might want to add.
Have you all looked at how other cities, in terms of their inspection process, how are they dealing specifically with the issue of fentanyl, and are there best practices that we in New York City can learn from other cities?
This is part of the review that we're doing. We will be looking at other jurisdictions as well.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna go in a different area with the little time that I have left. So an EDC report from last December acknowledged the issue of obtaining second-floor and basement space for childcare centers. The administration shared that it would be developing additional guidance from FDNY, from DOB, from DOHMH for property owners. What are the latest developments with that?
We did develop a guide, I think this was in response to your legislation, Councilmember, for property owners, so that they could market their space to childcare providers, which does address some of these issues about where a childcare program can be located on which, on which floors.
So there is this additional guidance, and it has been disseminated?
We, there is this additional guidance, let me check and see how we have disseminated this, this was really addressed towards, to property owners, so that they can engage with childcare programs, so let me get back to you about the details of how that has been disseminated.
Okay. My office has heard that DOHMH, DOB, and FDNY all do not want to take responsibility for providing second-floor or basement space permits for childcare providers, why doesn't DOHMH take that central authority, given that it is in the Health Code?
So there are requirements in the Health Code about where a childcare program can be located, those are key fire safety measures, then we consult very closely with FDNY to make sure that the Health Code sets out appropriate requirements, so that if there is a fire, children will be safe.
Okay, all right, those are my questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Ariola?
Thank you, Chairs. You have 100 inspectors that go out, and there are 9,692 providers, so did I hear correctly when you say that the inspectors go out annually, and then you kind of rely on a good faith of the providers to see if anything has changed within their, their daycare center or school during that period of time?
So our inspections are unannounced inspections at least annually, and those are point-in-time inspections. Childcare providers are responsible for following the health and safety rules at all times, and the inspection is designed to be a point-in-time check to see whether they are following those requirements. If we observe something that requires correction, depending on exactly what it is, the severity of it, we will go back out to make sure that that's corrected.
On September 6th, when the inspector went out to this daycare location where Nicholas Domenici lost his life and, and three other children were sick, was this inspection generated by a complaint, or was it in, in standard, you know, standard operating procedure?
This was a routine, unannounced inspection.
I, I want to go back to Councilmember Menon's question, because it is actually a question I have here on my page, and I don't really think that you answered it appropriately or, or specifically enough, because the quote from your commissioner for ABC News that I saw was that your inspectors are not trained in fentanyl detection, and maybe they should be, maybe. How committed is the DOHMH to providing that type of training, if your commissioner is saying maybe?
So what I can say is that this is, it is, it is a high priority for us, we are reviewing everything about the program, we are in conversation with OCFS and looking to see what else is important to add to our program.
Are there any drug treatment programs that you're working with to come in and give training to the inspectors? Are you working with other agencies like the DEA, or, or any, any of law enforcement to come in and give training?
So we, we obviously have a lot of resources that we can tap into, and, and we will work with, with those resources when we determine what's appropriate.
So can you say which resources you have reached out to, or is it something you can't say?
I'm not able to comment in any more detail about that.
Okay, I want to go back to the background checks. What triggers a safety assessment when you get the background check back from, from any one provider about a person who's working there or living there?
Yes, so, you know, so as, as I, as I noted, a part of the CCDBG requirements is that if there is a, a flag in the history for that particular applicant, that we are, we do a safety assessment. So there are certain crimes, you know, that, that make it a mandatory disqualification. You know, I do want to assure everyone, this is rare, but it does happen, so arson, child pornography, that person is not able to work in childcare, so we have to do, so we do a review of that, and that's a mandatory disqualifier. It could be that there is a finding that a person jumped a turnstile, that requires an assessment, and that person may not need to be disqualified from working in childcare. Someone could have, you know, a DUI, there are certain restrictions you can put on the person, no working with transportation, you, everybody in the childcare program has to be cleared, you can be an employee who works when there are no children present. So it is really an assessment of the particular circumstances, and you can imagine how important this work is, we are, we are identifying whether a person can work with children, and we are also assessing whether this person can pursue this job.
And are they able to work while this is being ascertained, since there is a backlog? Are they able to work until the background check comes in?
So I, I want to get this right, because it's so important, so let me, let me find out exactly what happens when we get this, what we would call a hit, and how we communicate that, and sort of what, what that time period is, let me get back to you about that.
No, no, it's really cut and dry, it's, are, if I'm being, my background is being checked, am I able to work at a daycare center while I'm awaiting that response?
So when, so the, the person, a person has to be fully cleared, at least the education director has to be fully cleared, the people, a person can work so long as they are under constant supervision of a cleared person, so they're not alone with children while we are processing, I misunderstood what your question was. So that is the safety mechanism, and as I said, that doesn't get us all the way where we want to be, that is also a, a burden on the childcare program, that that person can't work independently, and that's why we're really happy that we are in a better place, we're on a trajectory to improvement, and we'll be able to get those results back faster to programs.
Okay, and I just have one, one last question, just indulge, were there any complaints on this particular location prior to the inspector going, even though it was a routine inspection? Were there any complaints made about this particular daycare center?
You mean the, the program, the family program in the Bronx?
Right.
I don't want to misspeak, so I need to have my staff confirm before I get back to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Velasquez.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner, for today. I have a couple of questions, and, and I kind of need to echo the sentiments of my fellow colleagues here, especially when it comes to the checklists and the reliance so heavily on this, and yet, there's no real confirmation of how are we considering revising this, given the fact that we know what happened, and we understand, so, I mean, even given the circumstances, has anything? has anything changed within the last even couple of weeks? We understand that you do have to have a formal review process. We do understand that much. But at the same time, you know, there are daycare centers and these are our children, all of our kids, and it's on us. And we want to make sure that besides the long-term version, what is your short-term right now? What are you doing with the checklist right now? In addition to that, you did mention a reliance on a lot of state guidance. Is there an opportunity where you have seen where we can advocate here through a resolution where we can actually work with our colleagues in state government to modify those guidances to accurately reflect or to go to issues that haven't been addressed that your inspectors have seen?
So, we are, you know, undergoing the review, as I said, when any terrible thing happens to any of our, any entity that we, where we have regulatory authority. That's an opportunity for us to look at our processes and our protocols and also the law. So, we are doing that. As I have been out meeting with our inspectors, I have heard from them about the thoroughness of their inspection and how they do look for safety issues, even if they're not on that checklist. And they do know to escalate those to their supervisor and to NYPD. As for communicating with the state, we do work very closely with OCFS. We are in conversation with them. And we would be, you know, we have a very good relationship with them, but we would be happy to come back to council if there are areas where we think that your advocacy might help. We're happy to, you know, I think it's a good idea and would like to engage with you about that if we feel that that's necessary.
Okay, and then in regards to inspectors, I have several questions. You had mentioned that you do have 100 inspectors dedicated and it looks like it's 9,000 centers that you are using, inspecting annually. What kind of metrics do you have for these inspectors? Specifically, time performed? In addition to that, what kinds of behaviors have you noticed with inspectors? I.e., if they are overwhelmed, what kind of mitigations do you have for them?
I didn't catch the, can you repeat the first part of your question?
The metrics for inspectors?
Oh, what kind of metrics do we have? So, we do know the caseloads for inspectors and we, you know, review those regularly to determine whether distribute, you know, redistributing some of the workload is needed. Inspectors, you know, have worked closely with their supervisors to make sure that they are able to complete the, to get to their caseload. We're monitoring very, very closely that we are meeting our goals to inspect all programs at least once a year and to get back to those programs where we do find a deficiency within the timeframes to do re-inspections. So, we do have quite a lot of metrics and we are monitoring those very actively.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've been joined by councilmember Feliz. I do have a couple more questions, but you've been going for a really long time. So, I'm going to ease over here to DYCD and give you a break because you've been getting a lot of questions. So, this question's for DYCD. What feedback has DYCD received from providers about the delays in processing school-age childcare clearances? Does the agency track or qualify new? How many providers are struggling to get staff cleared?
First, good morning to all. Daniel, can you hear me?
I can hear you, sorry.
Great, thank you. First of all, thank you, chairs, for inviting DYCD today. My name is Daniel Giann, Assistant Commissioner for the Youth Services Operations Unit here at DYCD. Since the transition to the online portal, providers do have access to webinars, user guides, tutorials, FAQs. And we are recognizing a significant reduction in flags from providers when there are challenges. DYCD does have a dedicated unit within operations unit to support providers through all of the licensing process, including the background checks. And in the event when a provider does flag and need an escalation, we work collaboratively with DOHMH to escalate any concerns and delays.
I giggle because even with the unit, I remember often it wasn't very helpful. So, could you tell me, like, since the online portal has happened, what changes have been made as far as like DYCD and this unit that's supposed to help with these clearances? Because a lot of times, they just referred us back to DOHMH.
Yeah, so, one of the things we wanted to make sure is that that we were offering constant training in operations guides itself. As you know, there are new program directors that come onboard and they're new to this process. And we want to make sure that they're onboarded, aside from where CBOs do their own internal onboarding, that they feel that, you know, the funder of DYCD is supporting them through that process. So, it's not just limited to, hey, here's the phone number, but here's the process here where you can find, learn more about the regulations and what those requirements are. Here are the live links to the webinars and tutorials that are offered on the OCFS website so that they have that guide, you know, on hand digitally for usage throughout the program year. We do recognize that it is a large number of programs, right? So, right now in Youth Services, there are over 1,000 programs that operate under the Child Care License. So, we want to make sure that there's systems in place where it's self-sustainable. But we do have staff that are available to do one-on-one TA support as needed.
So, if there's a new director that comes on, does that trigger it where you guys reach out and say like, hey, these are the tools, this is what we do? Or they have to know to reach out to you?
Well, our team has direct lead contacts for every CBO. So, typically either the CBO has essential support and in the event that they don't have those resources in place, they do reach out directly to DYCD. We are aware when there is a new director because it is required to notify.
They have to notify you.
So, in that case, we also do follow up to make sure that they know those proper procedures in place. In many cases, it's that it's a new director, but they're from another CBO, so they're very familiar with the process.
What supports has DYCD offered to providers struggling with background check backlogs? I mean, I know you just talked about like the unit, but like what other supports? I know you said there's a couple of webinars. But when we're talking about sometimes when clearances are just taking really long, does that kick into the unit? Do you guys reach out to the state or DOHMH? Do you guys do some of that work?
Yeah, so, we do have constant communication with the team at DOHMH, the Bureau of Childcare, and have active conversations and flag when we are noticing that providers are continuously reaching out to us, aside from the first step of just, you know, redirecting them to DOHMH. If we notice a pattern, if it's more than one, you know, program within a CBO, then we know there is a need to escalate.
And what does that escalation look like?
Well, I mean, it's a case-by-case basis, right? And, you know, there may be, you know, background checks and maybe the lead director that requires, it's a new director that now, there's a change in the director in this SAC license, which is a much more thorough process. So, it's the nuances, yeah.
Change in SAC licenses is like terrible.
Exactly. So, it does require thorough review on our end based on the knowledge we know from the provider and also, you know, what capacity and supports that they have internally to make sure that they're able to implement and reach out to the right people to solve their issue.
So, and just thinking about with the new system that was launched in May, what was the communication like between DOHMH and DYCD? How soon were you brought in onboard when they were changing it? With the state and then with the city? Like, what did that process look like for you guys? And what communications did you guys have?
So, as we began to learn that the system was being implemented, we began regular communications with DOHMH to really assess what that impact would mean for our programs. We were excited to hear that the process was moving into an online portal because we know that would streamline processes and hopefully reduce the number of backlogs and the number of inquiries that would come our way to help escalate to DOHMH. So, as we went along, we wanted to make sure that our providers were aware. So, as soon as those links were made available, we were making sure that we were communicating out to those CBOs to access those tutorials, access those web links and communicate with DOHMH because that is a centralized process. It wasn't something that we were leading ourselves.
And so, just even thinking about the process of when it was coming online, was there a time for you guys to give feedback to DOHMH? And were you guys like working collaboratively together? Or was this something that was done totally separate?
I mean, there's been ongoing conversations for a long time between both of our agencies, just about the process itself because we've been engaged so consistently in helping providers so that when the system was coming into fruition, it was something that already, you know, ingrained in our minds, what expectations, what hopes we really wanted to drive home in the system.
What communication has DYCD had with OCFS about the impact processing delays have had on providers?
So, because DOHMH is that lead agency, we do begin direct contacts, but we've had a number of meetings with OCFS. When we did learn about the new system, we did have that conversation with DOHMH and OCFS. So, when it was first revealed to us, OCFS was a part of that conversation.
SAC providers report that they don't have enough cleared staff. They cannot meet the full rate of participation for each classroom. This has a negative impact on their Vindex rating. Does DYCD take this under advisement? And how can the agency adjust ratings on the account for staff deficiencies?
So, yes, we are aware that, you know, the annual evaluations impact a provider's Vindex or passport rating. You know, we want to make sure that programs are operating at the correct and required ratio because safety is paramount and accurate supervision is paramount to a safe program. When we do recognize that there was a delay in staffing up and having appropriate staff, we did allow providers an opportunity to ramp up enrollment as clearances did come through. We have been engaging in conversations with CBOs, first with a survey, and we hope, once we have that survey completed, to share with you all, just really getting, assessing the full impact over the process and really rethink what that may look like in the future in terms of the ROP and enrollment indicators. It's also important to note that we do individual evaluations as well. So, it's not just one site visit, there's multiple. So, you know, it is possible that in that first site visit, especially as programs are ramping up, the performance may not be as strong. But given the timeline that, you know, we do go out on two visits, it may give enough ample opportunity for folks to catch up and be able to resolve those pending actions.
I mean, that still becomes very hard, especially around the staffing issue. Because you can ramp up program and have like a great program, but if you don't have enough cleared staff, and even like, even if you have cleared staff, but you don't have enough cleared staff to then supervise the staff, that's still going to have an impact on programming because you can't do the things that you would normally do. And so, I do know that there is other factors that's taken into consideration. But I think that especially as the system is ramping up and things like that, and we know that there's a backlog, we should really not be penalizing organizations for things that kind of are out of their control, right? Like, they don't, they're not in charge of the clearance process. So, why are we then penalizing them for something that they don't have control over? Especially when things are submitted in a timely manner and those things are done. That's the only questions I have for you right now. Thank you. And back to the deputy commissioner. Just, I just have a couple more questions and then I'll be done. So, since the rolling out of the new automatic process system in May, how many successful applications have you guys processed? And how many have had errors and you had to be corrected?
We've cleared over 5,000 applicants since the online system was launched. In terms of sending, you know, applications that have been, that were not complete or were not, we sort of call them healthy applications, things that were missing something, I don't have that, I don't have that number with me. I think we can pull that number for you, though. I think we have that in our data. So, if we have it, I'm happy to share that with you. And again, you know, that's, that is part of the learning process. And we, that is why we've had webinars, we have FAQs, we're doing email reminders to programs for sort of top, you know, things that we see people making mistakes repeatedly so that we, because we want everyone to submit correctly on that first shot. So, I think that's just part of the learning process and we'll see things go even more quickly once everyone is used to the new system. I do want, I did, in a question that I was asked before and I was able to get the answer regarding the home-based program in the Bronx, we had not received any complaints about that program.
When the new system was started, did you test it? And how, and how did you, how did you train? How did the training go for those things? And did you have partners? Did you partner with DOE and DYCD to do those trainings and kind of like flush those things out a bit?
Yes. So, during the testing phase of the, of the online form, we did user acceptance testing with our own staff, both for the front end as though they were providers and on the backend for their receipt of the information. But we also partnered with community-based organizations with providers and we invited some providers to come in and do the testing too and got really good feedback from them and we were able to make some adjustments. So, DYCD's programs are using the other, you know, using the state's system. I would, I don't know, and I don't know if my colleagues knows whether, you know, how New York State did their testing. So, I'm not sure about that, but for our test.
Don't worry, I'll ask him when you're done.
For our system, that was part of our testing protocol.
Thank you. So, did you guys work with OCFS before they released it? And did they do similar things that they did as well?
They did the user acceptance test directly with the CBOs, not necessarily with DYCD in this case.
So, you didn't, you guys weren't able to work with them?
Not necessarily for the user acceptance test.
Okay, all right, thank you. At this time, I don't, oh, I'm sorry. I would like to acknowledge councilmember Narcisse, and she has a question.
Thank you. I was still preparing some of the questions. But thank you, chairs. Thank you for being here. Some of the, I understand the importance of completing a comprehensive background check. It takes about 45 days from where I'm in the middle of the reading of those, the statement. So, what steps are being taken to overhaul the background check system to prevent such bottlenecks in the future? Are there plans to modernize the system to make it more efficient and less prone to such disruptive delays?
Yeah, so, as I had testified before, we were able to launch our online system and bring on the 50 full-time staff for the unit. It was taking us many, many months. I mean, it would be very common for it to take eight months for us to process the clearance. We had really tens of thousands of applications in our backlog. So, we, since we've been able to hire full-time staff and really build our program and launch an online form, those processing times have dramatically increased. We now, it takes us about 36 days to process an application. Federal law provides 45 days. And there are some circumstances where we do absolutely need that full time. Not everything is in our control. We, I think that as we, as all of our staff are trained and we get better and better at using these new systems, we will eliminate the backlog entirely. We now have only about 140 applications in our backlog. So, things are really on a positive trajectory. And we expect to just continue to troubleshoot, refine our process and get better.
So, we are in better shape, that's what you're saying. Can you provide detailed data on how many educational and special needs program have been directly impacted by this clearance backlog? What is the estimated number of children left without essential services due to the delay?
So, we know that before we had our, our, really, almost our new program, a program that is, that is fully staffed, although we still have some staff that we are onboarding and some of the staff are still in training and have our new system that our processing time is dramatically reduced and our backlog is dwindling. I don't know that if I, that I could turn back the clock and I don't know that we have information about, you know, a year, a year and a half ago, when we had a backlog of tens of thousands, you know, which programs were impacted by that. I'm not sure that we have that. What I can tell you now is that our processing times are much, much faster and our backlog is much, much smaller. And we are on our way to not having a backlog, which is our goal.
What mechanisms are in place for providers and families to voice their concerns and receive timely? receive timely updates about when they can expect resolutions?
So one of the things that we included in the online system, which we knew was really important to providers, was a way for them to check themselves the status of the application. So we have automated notifications that go out, but we also have a place where a provider, they have an identifier for that application, they can type that in and they can get a check on the status of their application.
So now, I would say, if I may, that you have enough staff that can take care of making sure we don't have backlogs like we used to?
So we do. We have, we have eight more people coming. And we have our, some of our staff are still in training. So this is why we are, you know, I'm not ready to say that we're all the way there, but we do have the staff that we that we need to really run this program properly.
One of the things that, as a mother of four, I'm always concerned about the safety of our children in New York City. We don't want to say oops to children that relied on us, especially the innocent faces that we can see. So whatever we do, I'm counting on you to continue pushing and making sure that our children in New York City are safe, the best that we can, in the in the best of our ability to keep them safe. Thank you so much for your time. And I know my chair probably been asking a lot of questions. I'm not going to push it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you so much, Chair. Just a quick follow-up questions, and I want to thank all my colleagues asking questions that have come up from the tragedy in Kingsbridge. So just just a follow-up. Is, what triggers a background check requirement? Is it just you have to be living in the facility or is there a certain amount of time spent in a facility that that triggers a requirement? And does DOHMH take any measures or does OCFS require any measures during surprise inspections or otherwise to understand whether there are extraneous folks living or spending time in a childcare facility?
So anyone who lives, this is for home-based programs, anyone who lives in that apartment, who is 18 or older, and I have got my colleague here who's going to correct me if I'm getting this wrong, and anyone who works in that childcare program needs a background clearance to be processed. The the program is responsible, the childcare provider is responsible for submitting that application immediately if there's any change in that and in who is residing there or working there, and updating the records about who those people are. And when we conduct the inspection, that inspection is, you know, as I said, we have a checklist for health and safety requirements, and it is also to make just general observations to see if this sort of matches what we know in our records about that program.
So it's it's a, it's self-report, essentially. It's, there's not anything in existing protocols or requirements that has the agency check for extra people?
So the, we conduct an unannounced inspection, and that would be an opportunity to observe something that doesn't match the records.
Okay. And never thought I, any of us, I never would have thought to be asking this question, but could you explain what, if any, emergency procedures are in place at daycare facilities specifically regarding opioid overdoses? Do, is anyone responsible or required to have Narcan administration training or anything like, anything else that could be life-saving?
I don't, I don't think that there are any regulations specific about Narcan. There are, every childcare provider under Article 47 is required to have a safety plan, an emergency plan. They're required to have, they're required to do a variety of courses on on emergency medical type issues. They have to have first aid training, for example. They're required to have an epinephrine auto-injector onsite to address those kinds of emergencies. So there are, there are many, many kinds of emergencies that childcare providers are required to be be ready to implement.
Thank you. Yeah, understanding that there there are requirements for the providers to report and to to have plans. But unfortunately, of course, we're talking about how do we catch folks? How do we become aware of those who may be depraved as as they were in the in the actions that we saw in Kingsbridge? Those who do not want to be caught, you know, what what are, what safeguards exist within our protocols to to catch folks that don't want to be caught? And so I, you know, it's a longer, a longer discussion that I that I look forward to having and that, you know, I've I've committed to the family to have on their behalf. But yeah, just just want to make sure that, you know, we're we're thinking in that way, right? In addition to the self-report and the, you know, the measures that childcare providers are supposed to be reporting to you all, what are we doing? How are, I talk about this as how are we using our street smarts as New Yorkers, translating that into the inspection protocols that we have to to save lives and protect children? Thank you, chairs.
Thank you so much to this panel. We will be now be moving to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to two minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant at arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Our first in-person panel will be Nora Moran, Faith Biem, Gregory Brender, and Alok Rai.
This is good. Should I start? Okay.
You can start when you're-
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Nora Moran. I'm the Director of Policy and Advocacy at United Neighborhood Houses. We are a membership organization representing 40 settlement houses in New York City. They provide a wide variety of services, but specialize in a lot of youth and childcare-serving programs. You know, settlement houses really rely on the background check process to hire staff. They strongly support it. It's a necessary component of running a high-quality childcare youth program. And settlement houses and other providers rely on our partners in government to process those checks quickly and efficiently. And I think, as we've heard today, that has not been happening over the last couple of years. I won't go into all the background on sort of what's happened. We've heard a big accounting of it today. You know, for us, it's been difficult to quantify exactly what has, what the result of the background check backlog has been, but just some examples from providers that we've heard over the years since this first changed back in 2019. I've been extremely long wait times for prospective staff to be cleared, leading them to take jobs in other industries rather than wait to get cleared. Hiring challenges because of these long clearance times, right? People are in a pipeline and say, I can go get a job somewhere else where I can get hired quickly and I don't have to go through this terrible background check process. This has led to providers closing programs, closing classrooms, reducing capacity because they can't open fully, and that ultimately causes problems for parents trying to find safe and affordable childcare. Staff time, right? Organizations have had to spend a significant amount of HR and compliance staff time to just understand this process, chase things down when that could have been spent on on other activities. And then, you know, the last thing that's been challenging has just been penalties and issues for providers from DOHMH, from DYCD, because they don't have enough cleared staff, even though the government agency is is the reason for not having those cleared staff. Providers can show the paper trail of emails they've submitted, and, you know, they're still an issue, even though they're doing everything they can. We will say that the new online automated process has been, it's been better. Things are slowly getting better. We're not out of the hole yet. There's a huge backlog that we heard today of people who, you know, submitted clearances in 2019, 2020. We have, you know, program directors in our provider network who have been there sometimes 20 years and are still waiting, you know, from that paper form they emailed in two, three years ago. So we, you know, it's good that everybody's now using the same system. We're concerned that, you know, there's going to be a backlog of that system because of all the people who, you know, did a paper application that never went anywhere. So, you know, generally we want DOHMH to have the right resources that they need to get the checks processed efficiently, not rush the process and make sure that they're doing things thoroughly. Yeah, I'm way over time, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Faith Biem. I'm a Senior Policy and Advocacy Advisor at UJA Federation of New York. UJA is one of the nation's largest local philanthropies and has more than 50,000 engaged donors in New York area and supports an expansive network of nearly 100 nonprofit organizations. A number of our nonprofits oversee early childhood education and after-school programs and have been greatly impacted by the comprehensive background check process. As Nora has said, I would say the two main issues from the beginning is how long it has taken to receive completed background checks. It's taking months, but in sometimes years, honestly. Second is communication with DOHMH has been really challenging. When providers would send inquiries about the status of pending background checks to DOHMH, they often receive delayed responses with little information or worse, no responses at all. This is incredibly frustrating for providers who are just trying to do the right thing, get their people through the system and get staff in their classrooms and after-school programs. We recognize that the Adams Administration indicated in their blueprint, in their blueprint for childcare and early childhood education, the need to improve this system. And they said, we need 40 additional staff, which we heard have been hired, and we now have this online system. Online system, as Nora had said, it's not perfect, but it is a welcome change. Our provider says it's great to be able to upload this to an online system and not have to email a packet of information. It's really more time-friendly to be able to just check online to see the status of an application. There have been little challenges as far as, we're told originally that they would not have to submit packets that were submitted before May 14th, and that was eventually rescinded by DOHMH. So it caused a bit of a scramble amongst our providers and additional paperwork. I think the most important thing is that it's not a coincidence that this process has seemed to got better once there was additional staff given to the department. So we reject any programs to eliminate the gap or other cuts to DOHMH budget that could negatively impact this background check process. And we do, we understand hearing that it could take longer than the two weeks, but we have been advocating to have at least you at least try to commit to a two-week turnover for the background checks and to notify providers within 48 hours when background checks have been completed. I just want to be clear that all of our providers support rigorous background checks. They want to keep all of the kids in their care safe. But we need our partners in government to process those checks quickly and efficiently in order to maintain the high level of services they provide. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. My name's Gregory Brender. I'm here on behalf of the Daycare Council of New York. We are the membership organization of New York City's early childhood education providers, and we are, work in the belief that we should be a city where every child has access to high-quality early childhood education, regardless of their parent's zip code or their income. Our providers, as my colleagues have stated, really understand the importance of background checks. It is a role that only government can play to ensure that the people we are hiring are qualified to be in these programs. And we know we need a system that truly works. And as your questioning has pointed out, since the system has gone into place into 2019, in many ways, the system is not working. It has, it is getting better with the additional staff and with the online system, but we still need systemic reform to make sure that checks are processed in time. And this is happening in the context of a staffing crisis in early childhood programs. We did a survey of over 250 centers over the summer, and while low pay is the main reason that that programs are understaffed, background checks are a part of it. Eighty-three percent of those centers reported dealing with staff vacancies, and among that eighty-three percent, nearly a quarter of them had seven or more vacancies in the site. Our statewide colleagues at the Empire State Campaign for Childcare have found that there are 776 classrooms in New York State closed, being community-based organizations due to understaffing. So getting this right and making sure that we have a system that works and works quickly is so important to ensuring the availability of childcare and the availability of quality childcare for New Yorkers. We have recommendations in line with what our colleagues saying. One is to ensure that DOHMH has adequate staffing, conducting meetings between DOHMH and providers to identify the challenges and solutions in the process, and developing procedures through the newly-launched online application system to proactively inform providers when there are paperwork issues with an application. Thank you so much for this hearing and the great questions you all had. And we are excited to work with both City Council, Health Department, other agencies to make sure that this is a system that works.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of New York City Council, esteemed guests, and concerned citizens. I stand before you today to address a matter of utmost importance. The unacceptable delays in the background clearance process for teachers of early childhood education in our city. My name is Alok Rai, owner of Lightbridge Academy of Greenpoint, Brooklyn. We opened our doors on March 7, 2022, and provide support for children from age six weeks to five years with a capacity of 170 children. We all know that early childhood education is foundation of child's education journey. The individuals entrusted with this responsibility, our teachers must undergo rigorous background checks to ensure the safety of and well-being of our children. While these checks are crucial, the prolonged delays in the clearance process has become an unintended obstacle in our pursuit of quality education and consideration for our center being the solution for working parents. Let us reflect on the impact of these delays. As owner of a prestigious, brand-new childcare franchise location, it's crucial for us to be in compliance, not only with Article 47, but also with our franchise agreement requirements. Our compliance audits are regular and very frequent internally and from our home office. Even with all the oversight, our center was shut down by DOHMH on August 3, 2023, for two months due to lack of cleared staff. The staff clearances were submitted over five months back in February, March, and April of 2023, with many follow-up emails to DOHMH with absolutely no response. This closure led to following for everyone in our circle of care. Disruption to our community. There are only three childcare centers in our Greenpoint community, and ours is the only one which provides care for infants under 12 months old. Our children were left with no care for two months. Financial impact on our families. During this time, our families had to adjust their working hours, use their vacation time, fly in family members, some of them from overseas, to take care of our children every day with no end in sight. Financial impact on our childcare provider. In two months, we lost over, well over $250,000. We continued to pay our teachers, pay our rent and our expenses. This led, almost led us to bankruptcy. We reopened last week, and, but this is certainly going to take our families, our teachers, and our business a long time to recover from this disruption. So I would like to express my wholehearted support for Councilmember Abros' proposed bills, 1159, 1160, and 1189, which aims to address and rectify this pressing matter by calling for a speedy process, cross-department communication and collaboration between DOH and DOE. And last but not the least, portability of background clearances between childcare programs, especially if they coexist in a same location. between childcare programs, especially if they coexist in the same location. In conclusion, I stand here as a proud advocate for quality education, and I urge each one of you to consider the urgency of this issue. Let us support Councilmember Abreu's three bills as a step towards a brighter future for our youngest citizens, for the dedicated teachers who serve them, and for the future of our city. Again, thank you for your time and attention and the opportunity to have my voice heard today.
Thank you. I have a few questions, but you go ahead.
No, I just want to say, and I remember I've met with a lot of you on Zoom when I first took office. So just a quick question. Has you mentioned about meeting with DOHMH? Have they not met with you as providers to talk to you, or?
I can speak for U N H. They have, we are on, we're also on an advisory committee with the Bureau of Childcare. We're not, I should clarify, United Neighborhood Committee, we're not a provider. We work with providers. So we are kind of there as the provider voice. So they have, and you know, we've been in communication with them, trying to troubleshoot in our network some of the delays. You know, I think, once the new system was put in place, it's definitely a step in the right direction. It's really sad that it took almost three years for them to get an online system up and running. But yeah, there have been lines of communication open. I think they can always be better to the broader provider community. You know, the suggestion you made earlier about a phone line, like that's a small example. Whether it's that, office hours, just anything, you know, I know it's not just DOHMH. Every city agency has an email inbox. That's not always the best way for a provider to get a quick answer. And so I think thinking of those, some of those other solutions, right, to have those lines of communication open is, there are important things to lift up.
But definitely let us know if you need further help with that, because I'm going to talk to them as well as Chair of the Health Committee to tell them that, you know, maybe they just need to have a more regular communication with you guys. And particularly, by the way, so the new system, they have five vacancies. If you know anyone that can fill those, because before the cuts come in November, would like to have people in those positions, it'll make it a little bit harder to do that. So, you know, we're going to keep an eye on that as well. And I want to thank all of you for your advocacy.
I just have a question and just trying to understand. Do we have a number or account of how many agencies that have been closed due to lack of staff being cleared?
Yeah, we don't, we've definitely heard, sort of, we have ANIC data about classrooms in particular. What we've seen more often is in early childhood, and I can't speak as much in these services, is that individual classrooms. And we know of, for example, several centers where they have fewer classrooms than their DOE budget allows for because they've been unable to staff. And that's been a mix of both issues around the underpayment of staff as well as people waiting for background checks. And we've also heard of, we've had people who've taken other jobs while, as you probably experienced in your time as a provider. It's been, you know, frequent, we do bi-weekly membership meetings, and we hear that a lot in the kind of conversation with our member organizations, that they've hired someone, they've gotten an education director, they've got someone new, and then they leave before the background check is.
Yeah, you call them and they're like, oh, I'm sorry, I'm working somewhere else. Some of those things that like makes your heart stop.
The other sort of closure that I think is harder to quantify, but also worth looking to, is when it's like temporary. Because what's happened is, because there's a stopgap measure in place with the provisional clearances, you sometimes will have one staff member who's cleared along with several provisionally cleared staff members. So if that person is not in.
Yeah, no one can work.
Right, you can, yeah.
And I guess this is more for the SAC licenses. Do you guys think that it's, because I, like, you figure it out if you're here as a provider. But I remember how confusing it was often trying to figure out who to talk to. And it often felt like everyone was pointing the finger back. And it's like, no, you go to DOH, DOH, go back to, you go to OFCFS. Could you guys talk a little bit about that experience? Because I think that it's really important to make sure that we have on record about how confusing that is and how the system is kind of set up to kind of keep the wheels spinning a little bit.
I can talk about that because I have my recent experience for the last two months. We've been open for 18 months now. And in that time, we have almost four E C consultants changed. And it depends upon, it's very specific to who we are working with. So first, when we had, response was like within 24 hours. The one we're working right now, no response for four months. I have sent like, I don't know, 20 emails, right? Which is very frustrating because if I don't know, then I can't act on it. For example, and this is a very unique scenario. My education director was cleared because she had bachelor's in general ed with middle grades of minor. She was cleared because the related field of study was not defined before. It was gray area.
I remember, that happened to me.
Right?
Almost didn't get cleared because they said that I didn't have enough education credits.
So for this, I kept on emailing like for last, since March. And now I, they come for the inspection, and they tell me that, oh, this is not a qualified director. I said, why? Because, oh, this is not counted as a related field of study. I said, do you have it defined somewhere? So finally, they sent us a document, because they defined that like, I think, a month ago. And it's not, it's not there. So they say, you don't have a qualified director, so you shut down your program. I said, okay, if this changed, give me a grace period so that I can find somebody. But nothing was given, they were shut down on the spot. And the person who was there kept on saying, oh, I'm getting pushed from the central office. Let's close them down, let's close them down. And I said, can I show you the email trail? I've sent you specifically. Oh, I can't see that right now. So the entire experience was so frustrating, and in the end, I said, please, explain to me how I'm supposed to fix this issue if you're not answering my questions, sitting here in front of me. You have not responded to all my emails for the last four months. And say, oh, sorry, you have to just call somebody. I said, who? It was just a very frustrating experience, and I just felt, calling it unfair is an understatement. It was just not right, the way it was shut down. And we're trying hard to be compliant.
No, and I hear you. And I mean, it's interesting enough. When I was a provider, I had an issue with my SAC license because the requirement changed, you needed 30 educational credits, and they said I had 29. And so I was no longer qualified to be a SAC director when I had been one for over 10 years. So I do remember that experience firsthand and had to fight really hard because it didn't make sense. And I guess my last question for the panel is, and I know it was Mr. Rai. You had said you were supporting the, especially expedited and trying to get them, the clearances done a lot faster. And just from your opinion, because like for me, I like things to make sense, right? If we're already struggling to get the clearances done in 45 days, what would make it different from now changing it to 14 days? Because it sounds like we would be then saying, we want you to be out of compliance because they said that there now, it's an average of 36 days. So it seems like they're inching towards there, but we're nowhere near there. So I understand, like, we want to expedite things, but how would putting this in place not help? I feel like it would actually create more of a backlog. So just from, I would love to hear feedback on that as well.
Is the question that if we reduce the clearance in 14 days, how did it improve?
No, the question is, especially you specifically, as you said, you 100% supported. And I understand the hope of it, right? But if we're right now, if 45 days, they're struggling to get 45 days, people clear in 45 days, how is shortening it going to help?
Well, if my teachers, if I have, somebody leaves and I have to wait 45 days to fill that classroom, well, the teacher, I have to shut down my classroom right now. And parents won't be supporting like that. It's like, why don't you have things in order in your center? If we shorten it, that means I can tell them, okay, we'll be in compliance within two weeks so we can open the classroom in two weeks. That's a better answer than say, we don't know, right now, right?
No, I hear you. But I just want to say, I think we also, as providers, and making sure that when we're advocating for things, we're advocating for things that's going to work and not saying we're going to advocate for something to put people out of compliance. Because that's the goal. First of all, I would love for us to be at a place where you can actually open up a classroom and get someone cleared immediately. Like, we're in technology. We should be able to expedite things a little bit quicker. You know, it's 2023. That would be the goal. I don't know why it's taking that long. But just thinking about, a lot of our agencies are very antiquated and old, and we have to acknowledge that. I think, Nora, you wanted to add?
Yeah, I would just say, from U N H's perspective, we would support getting the clearance check to 14 days as long as DOHMH is resourced the right way to do that. You know, we would not want to be in a situation where the agency was rushing to comply with the 14 days and potentially like skirt safety standards in order to meet that benchmark. That's something providers would never want. So if they had the resources to get there, yes, that would be great. Part of what also is complicated about this, and you know this well, and it came up, is, you know, we know that there's some things that are in New York City's control and some things that are not, because they do have to rely on the state and the federal government to process the long list of specific checks that need to happen. And so what is often hard for us and for providers to understand is like, why, is, like, which of these pieces is New York City responsible for that they can make go faster? And which of these pieces are their hands tied because it's another level of government? And so part of, you know, what we would want to see around this, you know, the 14-day question in particular, is like untangling a little bit. Is it, who is really the delay, causing the delay in time? And if it's New York City and there's a way that we can get New York City to go faster, then of course, we should have all the resources to do that. Because as we saw, when they went from 15 staff to 55 staff, things got a lot better.
I want to say that was the most shocking thing I learned today, that it was 15 staff. Like, I was going to record saying like, kudos to them. Because 15 staff, clearing that amount of staff, that's amazing, but like also crazy that that was being allowed for so long.
Yes, yeah. So as long, like, if we can investigate and untangle like exactly where that holdup is, then great. If 36 days, 45 days, it's way better than what we've been dealing with and is something that, you know, providers in our network have been able to work with and have reported that for new people coming in since May, things have improved. So we're definitely moving in the right direction. But hear you on the, let's make sure we're not pushing toward a standard that's, you know, unable to be met and could potentially cause problems down the line or cause problems at certain times of the year when we know clearances, you know, there's more clearances, summer, school year start, or whatever.
Can I just add one more thing here? During this closure, when I was working directly with somebody in the office, Department of Health office, and I do appreciate them, you know, able to process it quicker during that time. So during that time, the background clearances did come back in about two and a half weeks, consistently for all of my staff, except somebody who had something to further check. So I don't think they were skirting any safety issues there, but it was just like they knew that we are closed, so they were focused on that. So having the additional staff will definitely have that. And I heard from the Department of Health employees that the reason why there's a delay is because we are understaffed. We are not able to get to the file for like, for like 30 days. So if they're going to get to the file in 30 days, of course, it's going to take longer and then come back to us and say, oh, your address is wrong, submit it again. Now we submit that, and then it's like, again, wait 30 days before they can even start the process. So, you know, I think having enough staff properly, where they can open our file like within 24, 48 hours, within two days at least, and to start the process, I think will expedite the process.
No, and I hear you. And I think that we all want to get there, but they just went from 15 to 40, right? And so we're seeing improvements already. So I think, you know, I want to make sure that we're acknowledging that as well because that's progress. And also thinking about, we are at a place where we are looking at more cuts, right? And so we want to be mindful of those things. But I really appreciate your feedback and all the support, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you to this panel. Our next in-person panel will be Brian Gutman, Michael Day, Sage Shaftel, and Robin Carone.
Whenever you're ready.
Chair Schulman, Stevens, members of the committee. My name is Brian Gutman, and I join you on behalf of Learning Care Group. Thank you for holding this important hearing today. I will be providing extended written testimony on the topic and solutions to help families access safe, healthy nurturing care in an educationally rich environment. Our 1,100 schools across 39 states, including three in the city, give us perspective into just how unusual the current situation is here. Despite the same background check requirements, New York City stands alone for taking months instead of days for clearances to process. This makes it harder for families to find the care they need, delays advancements for teachers and staff, makes it difficult to keep classrooms opened, imposes a barrier to expansion. Most states conduct the same clearances as DOHMH within about 14 days, well within the 45-day federal ceiling. Yet in New York City, we have had three times as many of our staff take longer than 200 days to clear than have been approved within that 45-day window. Intro 1160 will bring New York City into compliance with federal law and match the typical timeframe seen throughout the state and the nation. Long delays also add to the already high cost of care for families. High personnel costs balloon when staff cannot work in the roles for which they are hired. Intro 1159 will improve the efficient processing of clearances by eliminating the current duplication that DOHMH does of work DOE has already completed. And finally, we urge the council to make the volume of requests more manageable by making clearances portable as proposed in Intro 1189. Unlike several states, including California, Michigan, Texas, and Virginia, teachers and staff in New York City are required to have a new clearance conducted every time they change childcare licenses. In addition to the obvious examples, moving to a different provider, moving to a different school within the same provider, there's the particularly egregious example of moving across the hall from a preschool class to an infant class. We know that DOHMH is contending with considerable volume. The new system is an improvement that has reduced errors but is still heavily dependent on staff. We did a recent review this week and found that three-quarters of our current submissions to the new system have been pending for more than 100 days. We remain committed to health and safety. We appreciate your focus on this topic and your commitment to New York City families. We look forward to working with this body to improve the outcomes for parents, teachers, and providers alike.
Thank you, Chair Schulman, Chair Stevens, and members of the council. My name is Sage Shaftel. I serve as Assistant Executive Director for the Early Care and Education Consortium, a national alliance of childcare providers operating about 7,000 centers nationwide, including 222 in New York and 87 in the city. I want to start off by thanking DOHMH and City Hall for their continued efforts. However, for several years now, childcare before and after-school and summer program providers have been experiencing extreme delays in the processing of criminal background checks, far beyond those in the other states in which our providers operate and across the rest of New York State. While we have seen some improvements, these have been inconsistent in the average processing time our providers have been seeing is still six to nine months, far longer than the federally mandated 45 days. To that end, we want to thank Councilmember Abreu for his leadership in introducing a three-bill package to address these issues by ensuring accountability and increasing efficiency. As you've heard, these delays are not limited to the 87 centers our members operate. Rather, they impact all programs that go through DOHMH. Meanwhile, the city is facing a workforce crisis compounded by the childcare workforce crisis. Background checks play a critical role in assuring parents that their children will be safely cared for. And importantly, a teacher cannot supervise a classroom without a clearance. While we are in full support of thorough background checks, the length of time clearances are taking is undermining providers' ability to provide children with care and quality educational programming. Councilmembers Abreu's two bills and under-consideration would help ensure background checks are processed in a timely manner and reduce administrative duplication when an educator has already been cleared by the Department of Education. As of a few months ago, average wait times were anywhere from six to nine months, with about 50% of our clearances taking over a year. Processing is still taking far longer than in all of the 48 states in which we operate. On average, most states are completing checks in two to four weeks or less. These delays are causing would-be educators to leave the sector and result in classroom closures and the shortening of operational hours. In addition to the two aforementioned bills, I also wanted to call attention to a third bill introduced by Councilmember Abreu. by Councilmember Abreu, which would address another inefficiency in the system, the lack of portability. 1189 would allow a teacher to move across the hall to another classroom or across the city to another center without being required to go through the check process again, so long as they've been cleared by the city within the past five years. Thank you again.
Chairman Schulman, Chairman Stevens, members of the committee, thank you to the Committee of Health and Committee of Youth Services for addressing the critical challenge of childcare background clearance backlog. My name's Robin Carone. I'm a regional manager over Bright Horizons, and I oversee centers in New York State and New York City, and I'm also the licensing specialist. I've been working with the challenges since 2019, and though there are improvements, we continue to struggle from keeping our centers from being disruptive for care for the children. We like to provide examples of where we face in our 40 locations. So the delay in backgrounds checks, I have Teacher A, who's a veteran, who's been employed with us for eight years. I have Teacher B, who's an assistant teacher just hired three months ago. Teacher A cannot be left alone because her clearance has not come back, but Teacher B can oversee her. Another situation is we constantly need to move our teachers around, which is very disruptive to the children as well as to the families and to our staff, who then in turn are unhappy with their employment because they don't understand why I was hired for the toddler room, but I need to work in the infant room because I'm not cleared yet. The portability is also a huge issue. Our parents do not understand why if Teacher A has to leave for an emergency, Teacher B from across the hall cannot come and support her child's classroom, and we would have to shut down. Teacher A is also on vacation and like what Brian said, if we are, if a teacher from Center B can come assist, physically, we can't do that because that person's not cleared. Um, and then with the DOH and DOE, we can have a teacher who is employed from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM and can be by herself. However, at 2:03, can no longer be by herself because she is not cleared by the DOHMH background checks. So though there's a lot, and we understand the 14 days, and I agree with you, I'd like 45, but if we can have the portability, we would have less submissions being put in for the duplicate waivers that needed to be done. A clearance is a clearance to us. We all think it's very important, and we hope you will support the legislation of those three bills. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Stevens, Chair Schulman, and the committee. Uh, my name is Michael Day with Bright Horizons. We manage 600 childcare programs across the country, including 40 in the city. In New York City, a childcare center needs to be licensed for infant and toddlers separate from preschools. So we actually manage 80 licensed programs in the city, and we have contracts for 20 pre-K for all programs across the city. Um, we have a perspective similar to what you've just heard of working on this issue nationally, and the background check challenges are present in every state and every jurisdiction that we work in. There are ways to make them better. None are like what we face in New York City. Every other jurisdiction that we're in, we are typically getting background clearances back within 14 days. Councilmember Abreu's bill suggesting that be a deadline is a, is a great goal, but as others have said, we're happy with any deadline the committee would set. Um, this past month, we had 40 clearances come through across all of our programs. So it's only one clearance per center, but we have a good perspective. 40 clearances came through. Of those 40 clearances, one of them came through within three days of being submitted, and another one came through within 11 months of being submitted. We have to eliminate the backlog. We have to be able to clear people more quickly. You all know better than I even on the impact on families and teachers, um, these delays are, are facing. We believe there's a huge opportunity to cut down the workload that DOHMH is providing. The staffing numbers they share were astounding to me, and I testified last year ahead of the Health Committee budget hearing, um, asking you to support more staff for DOHMH around the clearance unit. Um, but I didn't realize how limited their staffing was. They're doing, they're doing a good job. They're doing a much better job now than they were a year ago and better than, than a year before that, but they're creating more work than they need to. If someone's cleared by DOE, let's not worry about their DOHMH clearance right now. If someone's cleared by OCFS, let's not worry as much about them. We want the focus to be on new hires who haven't been cleared by anyone before. Um, and, you know, we hope that you will do that, and certainly when we're transferring someone from one location to another, we hope that you would support, um, their clearance continuing with them because their background doesn't change just based on what age child they're caring for or what building they're in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just have a quick question because today they testified that on the onset on their new application that you can put multiple, um, sites and things now to be cleared under. Is that not happening? Because it, because I'm just...
Yeah. So, so that is happening. You are allowed to select multiple locations. Again, each individual center has two licenses, so you have to do it. We have been discouraged from selecting multiple locations because that adds to the backlog that DOHMH has to process. And across all of our centers, we certainly don't list every license on every application. But if a teacher is out absent because COVID or whatever reason, we want to be able to put somebody there, there.
So that, and I, I think that's why I'm just trying to get clarity because if they're saying that you can put on the onset, you're saying that they're discouraging you from doing that because it'll make the clearances process longer.
For, for them, yes. And, um, a note I took away from the comment was to list every one of our licenses with an application. I'm not sure that is the most feasible way to handle that.
And can I just clarify? They only allow assistant teachers to be transferred.
So they've only been allowing assistant teachers?
Yeah, they will not do a waiver for a group teacher. So I know they have mentioned ed director. We all understand that, but a group teacher is not permitted. So only assistant teachers are allowed to have a waiver.
That's why I'm asking because I, I just wanted to make sure.
If I may, the, the new system, um, in most places would not be a new system you'd see in 2023. It's a different way of submitting information. There's still an email that comes back if there's missing information or an approval, and sometimes that takes...
So the, so when they're making corrections in the system, it's not in the system, it's through email. So it's still going back to the...
It's still, once you've submitted your data, the only other thing that you can do in the new system is monitor the status, the, the broad status. Has a review been started? It takes about 30 days before we see evidence that the clearance has been looked at. Um, has the review been finalized? It doesn't tell us what that review finalized, you know, what, what the determination was. All additional communication happens through email. If additional documentation is needed, it generally resets the clock on day one, even if they've been sitting on that application for 60 days. It's an improvement.
No, no, I mean, listen, we, a lot of these systems and our agencies are antiquated, and this sounds like this is a very antiquated system still. Um, and this is good information. So thank you, um, for that. Um, and just one more question because I know the other bill around the Department of Education being cleared, um, because it's my understanding that they do communicate with DOE around that, but they still have to comply with the federal regulations to be cleared for, for the rest of it. And so it is my understanding that they are communicating for that. So I'm just trying to get clarity around, um, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't take away from still needing to get the other clearances done under the SAC piece, even if you are cleared through it. And so our, your, your request around this, this legislation would be to say, if DOE cleared you, you should be cleared because we can't supersede a federal law.
So I, I will just say, um, it was a pleasant surprise for me to hear of, of the communication that's already happening. That's wonderful. Um, where DOE, portions of a clearance that DOE isn't processing would still need to be done by DOHMH. It's some of these, um, some of these broader requirements that both are doing, um, where it's saying, let's make sure that if it's already done, we're not, we're not duplicating effort. Federal law also requires clearances to be processed as expeditiously as possible, not to exceed 45 days. That is the language of federal law. That is not the practice in New York City today.
Do you have a question?
And if I may, Chair Stevens, just on that with the DOE and DOHMH. So we hired an employee a, a couple of months ago, school started. Um, they're going to be a UPK teacher for us. Um, they had to schedule two fingerprint screenings with Identico, go down. They happened to be back-to-back appointments and pay a hundred dollars each time to get fingerprinted twice, once for the DOE approval and once for the DOHMH approval.
I'm sorry, when did the, the hundred dollars for DOHMH start? Because I remember that that, there wasn't a cost associated with that. When did that start?
I think since 2019.
Hmm, that's interesting. I was still a provider then, and none of my staff ever had to pay. We only had to pay for the DOE hundred dollars, but not the DOHMH. And I was a provider then, and we did not have that fee. So I would definitely, I, I need to look into that because that's new to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to this panel. That concludes our in-person panels. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. We will now turn to our remote testimony, and our first panel will be Deborah Sue Lorenzen, Riley Shubridge, and Audrey Vandenhuevel. Deborah, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time. You may begin.
I think you might be muted.
I think you're on mute.
We can't hear you. You're muted, and I know you're testifying, so we're gonna, let's try to fix that first, please. Thank you. Are we ready?
Hello, can you hear us? This is a, a test.
It doesn't seem like she can hear. Oh, we, we, are you, are unmuted? Did we unmute her? Because we still can't hear her. We're really sorry for the technical difficulties.
Okay, we'll try this one more time. Deborah, you can begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Can you hear us? Oh, we cannot hear you.
Okay, we're gonna move on for a moment. We'll come back to Deborah. Riley, can we see if we can hear you?
Can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear Riley. You can begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Time has started.
Thank you, Chair Schulman, Chair Stevens, and member of the council for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Riley Shubridge and I'm a government relations representative at Kinder Care Learning Companies. I want to recognize DOHMH for being here today and for your ongoing commitment to working with providers to improve the background check process. Kinder Care is the largest provider of early education and childcare in the United States and operates more than 1,500 centers across 40 states and the District of Columbia. Kinder Care has a large footprint in New York State, serving over 2,000 children and employing over 500 teachers and staff across 20 centers, with seven of those centers being located in New York City. We strongly support Councilmember Eberes legislative package, Intro 1159, 1160, and 1189. Kinder Care strongly supports robust background checks and believes they are critical and assure families and childcare providers will be safely cared for. However, under the current system, background checks have taken several months and sometimes over a year to process. Far too often, protracted background check clearances have led to qualified professionals leaving the ECE industry, not because of the background check findings, but because the candidates cannot afford to wait while their background check clears. Fifty percent of the background checks we have submitted within the last 12 months have not cleared, highlighting the significant wait time for these candidates. Further, our center directors spend far too much time inquiring about background check statuses, calling departments, and navigating overly complex systems. One center director described this process as having a second job, which encroaches on her valuable time needed to train and coach teachers and engage with families. Fortunately, Intro 1159 and 1160 would alleviate these challenges by creating a structure that would ensure a background check is completed in 14 days as well as removing duplicative efforts. While not part of today's agenda, Councilmember Eberes' third bill, 1189, is critically important to allow for portability of clearances. These bills represent an important step towards streamlining the administrative processes and allowing these ECE professionals to spend their time doing what they do best, delivering high-quality early childhood education for students and families. For these reasons, Kinder Care is proud to support these bills and we request your support on these critical pieces of legislation.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you for your testimony. Deborah, can we see if we can hear you one more time?
Good work. Can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect. You can begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Thank you, members of the New York City Council Committees on Health and Youth Services for the opportunity to testify and for this joint hearing. As an early child to provider and a parent, I want to offer my heartfelt condolences to the families who suffered such an unthinkable tragedy in Kingsbridge. My name is Deborah Sue Lorenzen. I am the Director of Youth and Education for St. Nick's Alliance and School Settlement Association. Each year, we serve more than 6,000 of North Brooklyn's 2- to 24-year-olds. When fully staffed, we have nearly 300 part and full-timers who require DOHMH comprehensive background clearances. I want to begin my testimony by recalling a committee hearing in winter 2019, shortly after the state's new mandates for background clearances were imposed and shortly before the pandemic caused a major upheaval to the youth services workforce. Then my colleagues and I raised red flags that DOHMH desperately needed reinforcements in order to resolve the already existing lengthy clearance backlog and institute the new regulations. This is not a new problem. In the years that followed, the problem was compounded though to such an extreme degree that the ability for childcare and youth service fields to function was undermined. DOHMH testified earlier that the backlog is down from many thousands to 140. That's terrific, but I think I might be one of them because I have never received my CBC letter for my 6,000 packets submitted in 2019. So I suspect many of these packets have gone missing and need re, need resubmission. Based on today's testimony, impressive progress has been made to improve underlying causes of the delays such as staffing and technology, but I remain concerned about DOHMH's ability to catch up and stay on top of the clearances, particularly within a two-week window. Of the 261 St. Nick's current staff who require CBCs, we are awaiting clearances for 98. Perhaps there are additional solutions possible using alternative clearance systems like Fieldprint, which OCF uses for Maricor, portability of clearances, or sending staff outside New York City for clearances. I must admit, I remain a little confused about the city and state's roles in the clearance process.
Time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work on behalf of the Youth Services field and for consideration of my testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next panelist will be Audrey. You can begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Time is starting.
Thank you, Chair Stevens and Chair Schulman, for the opportunity to testify on addressing the DOHMH clearance backlog. My name is Audrey Vandenhuevel and I am Human Resources Manager at Good Shepherd Services. It's my responsibility to ensure compliance with clearances, with clearances in all of our programs, including school-age childcare license programs. For SAC license programs in particular, our team ensures that staff are fingerprinted, have approved medical clearance, and that their state central registry and 6,000 packet are submitted. We then enter their information in FAMS and conduct the follow-up for the clearance. My testimony will focus on the impact of background checks on our after-school programs. Good Shepherd Services operates 22 after-school programs across the Bronx and Brooklyn. We employ 290 staff members in these programs. We have approval letters for 177 of our current staff, with the remaining 113 still in process. For those in process, some have been waiting three weeks, while others have been waiting for up to six months or more for clearance. The delay in background checks is hindering our ability to operate programs and to meet staff ratios. In addition to the impact, in addition to the impact that the delays are having on our communities we support, we would, I would like to share the administrative challenges as well. While FAMS has improved the processing time for new staff, it is easy to, it's easy to use and convenient for entering new staff information, however, with the transition from the central clearance unit email address to FAMS, we have had to resubmit 6,000 packets and SCR clearances that were previously submitted multiple times for staff who have been with us since 2019 when the process changed. This has created a delay in processing and an administrative burden. While we are receiving approval letters for new staff in about four weeks as opposed to months or never, clearances for current staff have taken anywhere from eight weeks to never being received. Earlier this month, the New York City Department of Health conducted a site visit at one of our Beacon programs, and we were told that two of our staff were not on the program's staff list, and they were hired in March and July of 2022. We provided documentation that their packets had been submitted and were told by the auditor that they had been expunged and may have to be re-fingerprinted.
Time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony and thank you all for your patience as we worked through our tech issues. That concludes this panel. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in Zoom and I will call on you in the order of hands raised. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. And I'll turn it back to the chair for closing statements.
I want to thank everyone who participated in today's hearing, particularly providers. This is something that's very important. There were some questions, I will say, that did not get answered today, but we're going to be following up. And I want to assure everybody that we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that our children get the services they need and that you're able to provide that. Thank you.
I want to thank my co-chair, Lynn Schulman, for working with me on having this very informative hearing today. I think for me, the most pressing thing was finding out that DOH was operating with 15 staff and clearing thousands of thousands of folks. So I went from thinking, oh my God, they have been so incompetent, to thinking that those 15 people actually were heroes, and thinking about the work that they were doing to get done. So I do not want to go without saying that because it's not easy. So this also means that we need to continue to fight to ensure that they get additional staff, especially going into budget cuts and thinking about the importance of making sure that they're fully staffed and functional to ensure that the providers have the resources that they need. In addition, that would help with some of the trap, obviously a tragedy that took place that we want to make sure that we're going to underscore, and so we cannot cut corners in this because it really is about making sure that all our kids are safe. So thank, thank you to everyone who testified today. I appreciate hearing all your feedback. Clearly, we have a lot of work to do, but we will do this together. With that, this hearing is adjourned.